Monthport Town Council meeting to order for Thursday, May 9. Roll call Jacob.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Disney M.
Here.
David Key.
Here.
David Stewart.
Here.
Daniel Wormsby.
Here.
Paul Donovan.
President.
Robert Carmine.
Here.
Item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. We have one legislative sentiment for Heart and Soul.
Yes, who is here to represent Heart and Soul this evening? We're sort of the pass-through agency for this award. In that, um, that Heart and Soul has been awarded a state of, um, Maine recognition. It says here, "Buxport, Heart and Soul, congratulations on this evening's Spirit of America Award. What a wonderful recognition of all your hard work and dedication to those in our community. I please have sponsored the enclosed legislative sentiment in your honor. If I can ever be of assistance to you in the future with a state-related matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Kimberly Rosen, State Senator." And the sentiment says, "State of Maine, we have known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing Buxport, Heart and Soul, a Buxport recipient of the Spirit of America Foundation Award. The Spirit of America Foundation was established to encourage and promote volunteerism, and the foundation presents awards to honor local individuals, organizations, or projects in appreciation of community service. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and we have ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with on behalf of the 129th legislature and the people of the State of Maine voted this fifth day of April 2019 at the state capitol." I would take a minute to say that Heart and Soul is alive and well and working on implementation of eighty-two, um, citizen-generated ideas that, um, came out of that project. Our visions and values statement from Heart and Soul reside in this, um, council chamber and for the lens that we filter our decisions through. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Is there something else? Oh, you want the envelope? Item four, we have considerations of previous meetings. We have twenty-four of them from 2015 on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take a motion to approve, all of them as a bunch?
All of them as a bunch.
All twenty-four?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further from the public on this, from the council? I'd just like to, again, thank the, I believe Kathy's putting these back off for us.
Yeah, the, the, the most recent ones, the nineteen ones, um, Jacob.
Jacob, thank you Jacob.
And the, the other ones, Kathy's catching up.
Great. Alright, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Uh, receiving review correspondence, so please call the Verona four twenty-seven nineteen. You all have in your packet. It was Orland, yes.
It was Orland, my apologies, that's not posted.
But you all have in your packet on what they did there, and, uh, again, good work by our folks in helping out somebody that was over there. Item six, ordinances considered to introduce. Uh, first was a second reading, Article four, weight limits and restrictions.
That, um, is, we discussed that last time. Um, our court officer had given you updated language that, um, simplified that a bit. This is the second reading.
We don't need to have a public hearing on this before we do.
You don't have to, but you, if you choose to, you can, and that would be at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Followed the council.
If I remember correctly, I know we have that option, but recently we've been having them.
Yep.
We've had them on the last couple.
Well, set this for a public hearing at the next meeting then?
Might as well have them on, on all three of these, I would guess.
Again, uh, I will talk, item B is second reading for council rules update.
And this, um, are the ones that updated, um, the items that the council had talked about at the special meeting you had?
And then, uh, item C was a second reading for proposed charter change in attendance. If it's the council's pleasure, we can all set these for a public hearing at our next meeting, um, May, what?
Third.
Third. Alright.
I'd, I'd make a motion to do that.
Second motion, and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. So we'll set those all for public hearings at the next meeting.
Okay.
Item seven, discussion items, um, infrastructure committee update. Counselor Crowe Michael?
Yes. We had a, uh, really well-done presentation, uh, from Lewis and Mom and the committee on the, uh, Buxport Historical Society Museum Concept Study. At this point, a lot of, I don't know how mu- how much detail we need to go into in terms of, uh, the pricing.
What the reason behind it was.
We, uh, part of the reason was basically to look at what to do with the historical society, uh, moving this historical society, creating a gateway, uh, so to speak, out there. Um, total price was two million, uh, let's see what we got there.
Twenty-three.
Two million twenty-three, uh, dollars. Um, it's obviously an extensive project, and it's something we're going to, um, consider. A lot of issues on, uh, what it would be worth to the town, what kind of, um, uh, town, what the ideas the town has as a whole to go into it. And, uh, we're gonna refer it for the study with the council and input from the town going forward. So that's really all we did today, was just hear the presentation and see what they, uh, had in mind.
And that's posted on our website, that presentation, or can it be?
It, it's on as part of our, um, this, can, the infrastructure committee meeting this evening, but it can be posted separately.
Yeah, I think it'd be cool to have it just separate, so we could have it out there, so people could find it.
The second one was a, uh, hit the trash trailer repair proposal. We, um, uh, the proposal was to repair, uh, one of the trailers, uh, that it would be about twelve thousand dollars, and would give us at least two more years of that at the, uh, expense, uh, saving the expense of at least a hundred thousand dollars for a new trailer, so we are moving that forward. The, let's see. The third one's the Route forty-six plowing contract. We had three bids for that, and we accepted the low bid of, what did I do with my notes? Seventy-eight thousand?
Seven hundred.
Uh, seven hundred, uh, with land for ex- excavated, thank you. And, um, let's see, the last two items we did not get to tonight, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council on that? And we'll have a couple resolves coming up, take care of those items. Uh, second item is a two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollar loan to the RSU, um, one that we had approved earlier.
Yeah, it, the, the reason this is on the, um, agenda is that the, the, this project moved through the process that it had to go through. You had approved the town contributing, um, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars under certain circumstances. And following that, the school had to go through processes and votes that, um, gave them permission to move through this, uh, to, to do this. And it's on the agenda because they've been through their process, and we're going to be writing a check. There's not another, um, vote required from the council because you already did your approval. But I, I wanted you to be aware that the process has worked its way through. You have documentation in your packet of, um, all the steps that, that went through, as well as a copy of the resolve to understand, and that, um, they will be starting their project or continuing their project. And, um, we will be financing two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars and saving them some interest and earning us a little bit more than what we can otherwise. So this project is, it's gone through all the hoops that it had to go through to get to where we are. And we have our, our superintendent and school board members here with us if we have any questions.
Are you here just for this?
No.
I didn't think so. Are projects going forward though, and are siblings on, online, on time?
Projects moving forward. Uh, we've done, um, an initial pre-construction meeting. We're targeting May twenty-six to remove the bleachers, relocate those into the cafeteria area. Um, we're targeting June third to begin actual work, removing what's currently in there, preparing for the new Florida lot.
Be done by the first school year?
That is the ideal, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council?
I mean, Mayor, I, I still, I mean, um, it's still hard for me to grasp that we're loaning money to ourselves, um, in, in a sense, but I think it's a great that it got through all the hoops that it needed to, and I still wish we could just give the RSU the two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thanks. Um, item eight, agenda items. First one's to approve resolve twenty-nineteen. No?
No.
Okay. You had me scared for a minute.
No.
Resolve twenty-nineteen forty-five for refurbishing the trash hauling trailer to transfer station. How the council like?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Anything from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item B is to approve resolve twenty-nineteen forty-six toward the Route forty-six winter maintenance contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further from the public? From the council? All in favor? Motion passes. Item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Don't have any. Item ten, approve quick claim these discharges. Um, we have several of these to go through. Brenda Snow, Gambell, map thirty-two, lot sixty, a tax lien, twenty thirteen to seventeen. Gary and Lisa, Garza Rely, map five, lot thirty-five, tax liens, twenty fourteen to seventeen. Ayers and Kevin Lowe, map nineteen forty-six, lot forty-six, tax lien twenty sixteen. Aaron Marshall, map forty-three, lot seven, tax lien twenty seventeen. Aaron Marshall, map forty-three, lot seven dash one, tax lien twenty seventeen. Aaron Marshall, map forty-three, lot eight, tax lien twenty seventeen. Max Corrin and Catherine Corrin, map one, lot ninety-two, twenty twelve, sewer lien.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve, and motion a second. Any further from the public on these, from the council? And this clears up, uh, again, more than we had.
These are more.
Outstanding.
Fore- foreclosure, is that where?
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. I'll sign all those coming through. Item eleven, town manager report.
Yes, um, um, the Bangor Daily News will be sponsoring a session at the Alamo on June fourth. The doors open at five o'clock. It starts at five-thirty. It's open to the public as part of their Dirko Speaks, um, series. It's an eight-series, um, thing that they do over the course of the summer. This session features myself and Richard Rosen and people from the Bangor Daily News discussing. Their topic is lessons from Buxport on losing a large employer. This event, as I said, is open to the public and will be recorded for posting on the Bangor Daily News website. We were chosen because of our success, and so this should be.
So is it like a panel, or is it?
It's a panel that is, that will be answering questions. Um, that's the format. The docs are in, for anyone who hasn't noticed. Um, they have been there since May first. The marina is still scheduled to open on May fifty, which is more good news. And the Park Street project received approval from the planning board this week. And I want to take a minute to clarify for the public that the town is not contributing to the cost of building Park Street. The town is paying for the cost of constructing an extension of Broadway to meet Park Street to provide, um, improved traffic in that area and provide connectivity. This project was first contemplated in the late nineteen nineties, and it has taken some time, obviously, to move it forward, but it opens up the area for some much-needed housing in the community. There was some confusion that we were subsidizing Mr. Wardwell's construction of Park Street, and that is not the case. We're paying for the cost of constructing Broadway to connect to Park Street, so.
Questions from the public on that, council? Thank you. Oh, sorry, yes, sir.
Jim Morrison, he's Buxport. At the planning board meeting, uh, Mr. Wardwell said that he wasn't going to, uh, extend the, the road across. Now, is that a, because I've already had questions from people, you know, is that gonna be taking place in the future? Is, or is he gonna keep that land so that it can't be that extended across to Bayview, I don't know. Thank you.
It's my understanding at, at this time that he has no plans to extend that to Bayview. And part of that is a result of property owners on Bayview who are concerned about that, I, I believe. But that wasn't part of his. The connectivity was from Broadway to Park, but not Park to.
Right, and he, and he kind of assured the planning board that they, that that wasn't in his plans at all, or that was something that was written, or we.
Excuse me, Rich, do you have any?
It's not written anywhere that he's not going to do that, but Mr. Wardwell expressed his concern and thoughts of not extending Broadway further to connect to Bayview. What's gonna happen is a T intersection is gonna be formed from Broadway past Park Street and gonna create a new street. The name of the street is New Street, but that still leaves about a seven-hundred-foot buffer from where Broadway will now end and the connectivity to Bayview.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a little bit of a problem with, I'm sure John Wardwell will stick by his words, but John, like the rest of us, isn't gonna live forever, so. Um, and this land's gonna go somewhere at that point, so if we are concerned about that, maybe we should look into it a little further. If not.
I think there's a process that you have to go through if you wanted to do it anyway, to be in public hearings and, and all that type of stuff. And I think there'd be plenty of, I, I don't wanna restrict somebody from a future, future process, but, and again, if that came up, I, I, there'd be plenty of hearings and folks could, could, uh, air their concerns at that time. I gotta sign those two, Jacob, before we leave. I'll, I'll get them, I'll get them when we're done.
Hold on.
I'm ready.
Yeah. Item twelve, sub-public hearings, whole public hearings, approval of any licenses or permits. We, we have three licenses and one public hearing, is that correct?
And we have one other request for permission to, um, do something on the waterfront that's not actually a permit, but you have, the council has to say.
Good to go?
They, good to go. So we, we actually have.
Alright, we'll grab that at, at the end, because I don't know anything I have that you do. Alright. Um, first is an innkeeper's license for the Buxport Motor Inn.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, and this is a renewal innkeeper's license. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Second is, um, uh, GRR Incorporated Extension of Liquor License. Read this, cleanse please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Anything else from the public, council? All those in favor? Motion passes. Third, we have a, from Subway, a food service business license. Again, is this a renewal, correct? Yeah. Anything from, uh, take a motion?
Second.
And a second. Anything further from the public or the council? All those in favor? Motion passes. Now we're gonna have a public hearing on Catherine Warren doing business as Warren's Waterfront Restaurant Incorporated for a liquor license. We'll open up the public hearing. Anybody have any comments or concerns, or, Ms. Ms. Warren here, is she? Congratulations, I think, are gonna be in orders. Thank you, thank you for, um, hearing nothing from the public or the council?
I, I have one question. Um, year round?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Declare the public hearing closed. How would the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. And while Jacob's handing out the signature stuff, so you have a.
Be open by weekend?
I'm sorry?
Open by the weekend?
A weekend.
Just not this one.
When do you?
The twentieth. The, the twentieth of this month?
Yeah.
Outstanding. Alright.
You got two-point-two million dollars you wanna put in the waterfront? Keep, keep, I'll jump up here real quick.
I'm David Warren, but, uh, I was up to the transfer station this morning and talking to Danny, he said, well, we can bring the cardboard up there, but we can't bring the rubbish up there? The old, the same extent.
How about, how about you give the town manager a call tomorrow, let her look into that, I think?
We got two apartments up above the restaurant, and we'll, we'll take their trash also, so.
Oh, yeah.
Come see me. I, I, I'm upstairs, Monday through Thursday and Friday morning. Um, and I, I can discuss what, I, I know that the apartments, I believe, can, I think it's commercial entities that aren't supposed to access the transfer station, but I, I need to, I need to look at the rules before I say anything because I'm not, I don't wanna say the wrong thing here, and I will. But come see me and we'll.
Yeah.
Figure out a way to make this work.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, five signatures on the liquor license extension is five.
Three for five. Yep, thank you.
There you go.
And we have a fifth item.
Yes, I do. Main Street Buxport is, um, looking to have an event on the wa- waterfront, and Brooke is here to talk about that.
Hang on real quick. Just wanna take an item that's on the agenda.
Sure.
All those in favor? There you go. Now, now you're officially.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So, Main Street Buxport was sort of inspired by our, um, partner organization in Belfast, which is called Arretown Belfast. It's their main street organization. They've had a really successful dinner for several years on their pedestrian bridge, which runs parallel to the Route One Bridge in Belfast. Um, we have a beautiful walkway with a beautiful view, and for the last several years, we have held summer dinners that have raised some operating funds as part of our annual fundraising strategy, but we've done them on private property. Uh, what we would love to do this year is to have that same sort of dinner, but on a portion of the waterfront walkway. Uh, the date that we're proposing is Friday, August twenty-third at six o'clock. I met earlier in the week with Jeff Hammond and with Chief Gagin and with Rich just to go over any kinds of safety or permitting issues that they had, uh, and, and they didn't have any. Um, they had some good questions, but basically said that I just needed, uh, council permission from you. Um, the area that we're proposing, I should've brought a picture, because I have one, but, um, if you are standing in the gazebo and you're facing the former mill, there's a walkway that leads out of the gazebo and goes towards the former mill. Uh, it actually runs parallel to the main waterfront walkway path, so it doesn't block the path. It, that's a portion where there's two, um, parallel walks that go next to one another. That's where we would like to do it. Uh, we've measured that, worked with our caterer that we are hoping to use, and that seems good. Um, some of the questions that Jeff and Chief Gagin had were about insurance. Uh, we have a general liability insurance, and the caterer also has a similar insurance. They also have a liquor liability that, um, that Main Street does not have. All of that we could provide, you know, in advance to the town. Uh, we can also name the town as a one-time, uh, sort of rider on our general insurance for that particular event. Can give you all that. Uh, as we've done in years past when it's been on private land, we would sell tickets in advance, so it's not like people are just showing up randomly. Um, we do that online and usually at book stacks. We would have a goal of selling up to seventy-five tickets. It's been from the fifty to seventy-five range the past couple of summers. Uh, and it would be a twenty-one and up event, since we would be offering, um, beer and wine. Uh, we probably have some acoustic, non-powered music, and, um, and again, the path itself would still be, uh, would be usable during the event. So, um, that's what we would like to do, and I'm happy to.
So you're, you're charging to get into this?
Right, so it's a part of our overall fundraising efforts and has been for years. So we sell tickets in advance.
So, do we normally have people, like, if they have the beer festival, do they have to get a permit?
They're just like this. Looks like Shelby, um, when Shelby came and wanted to use the other parking lot, we had to have our permission to, there, there's, there's not a, there's not a permit for the walkway, you know, for that specific.
Yeah, Jeff said there was no permit that, um.
What are you using for se- what do you have for security?
Uh, so, no official, I mean, security, we.
That's not good, though. I mean, you got people drinking down there.
Right, so when we, yeah, when we spoke with the chief, I mean, he basically said, um, I mean, I don't wanna quote him exactly, but it was sort of like, well, what would happen if someone just showed up, right?
I'm worried about somebody walking out.
Walking out with their drinks. Uh, yeah, so I think if you, I wish I had a visual. Um, the area is pretty, um, not isolated, but it's sort of its own space. So there's the gazebo at one end, there's the stairs that go up to the, uh, empty leadbetter lot at the other end. And I think if security was a concern, and, you mean as far as somebody taking a drink and walking out, or?
Somebody walking out of there, falling into the river. I mean, how, are you, are you cordoning it off anyway? Are you having ropes around it, or is it?
Uh, I mean, we could. We didn't plan to have ropes off it anyway, because we have licensed bartenders. I mean, they undergo training, which allows them to, or, you know.
Would that be any different than people walking out of one of the restaurants down near the waterfront after a beer? Are you talking about taking a drink out, or just somebody walking out drunk?
We're taking a drink out of there more than.
Right.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you said just walking.
Which we would obviously not allow. We could certainly have a volunteer, somebody who was at both sides of the event, who was making sure that that didn't happen. These events have not been like, um, they've been fun, but not like wild.
Things can happen, though, I mean.
No, I know, I appreciate that, but I'm just saying, we, this'll be our fourth year. We've never had any sort of issues.
Coordinate it off in any way, or?
No, no. Um, we've trusted that the bartenders are not gonna.
Again, like people walking up and down the waterfront, it's, it's free access into the event?
Well, sort of. I mean, it's, it's, it's offset from the, it's a, it's a parallel path to the main waterfront path, so.
But there's nothing that blocks somebody from walking the waterfront to taking a right turn and turning into your event?
Absolutely, but it's a seated dinner with people's name tags. Everyone's already bought their ticket in advance, so it'd be, I think.
Are they giving tickets for drinks?
Obvious. Uh, so we've had, like, two drinks come with your meal, and we could ticket that and be more formal about that in a public place.
I, I guess I'm saying, if somebody wants a drink, are they gonna walk up to a bar to get the drink?
Yes.
So if I'm walking down the waterfront and I take a right turn and nobody pays attention to me, I can go get a drink.
Yeah, so, and actually, Sean had, that was what I was sort of alluding to. So we would have a guest list, and, but we could make it more formal with a ticketing event. But we've had a guest list because people have dietary restrictions and all sorts of reasons why we need that list, so it's pretty.
I, I, I really think you need to coordinate off, you know, to, to limit access.
I think that would be doable. There's a, as you walk down the path towards the mill, the only other access point to it is a small sidewalk that connects this path to the main path. So it would not be difficult to put, you know, some sort of, uh, rope or whatever.
Saw, yeah.
Something.
Anything that, I, I think I agree with the mayor. I, I think you don't have a cash bar, um.
No, 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 it's a, it's a.
Ticket only.
Right.
Okay.
And that's how we've done it these past, so it's a one-ticket price, and people cannot.
Sure.
Yeah.
That'd be a beautiful place to have a dinner.
It's beautiful. It's really beautiful. The, the view is like, it's incredible, yeah.
Anything else from the public, uh, council? From the public?
Thanks.
So, council's pleasure. All those who want to approve this?
Make a motion and approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? I mean, we have opposed?
Three.
Three? And one, two, three, four, motion passes. Uh, next, discussion items not on the agenda for council and public. Anybody from the public have anything they wanna say?
Uh, first, I'd like to welcome Catherine Dave and congratulate them on.
Uh, first I'd like to welcome Patrick and Dave and congratulate them on the opening of Warren's, which will open on, I found it there, so that's why. May K opened Porta Call, which opened yesterday in the form of Rosen's building. And today I had the opportunity to join the middle school for their poetry contest for the fifth graders. If you haven't been up to the middle school or the Performing Arts Center, whatever the kids are doing, please try to get up there. I mean, besides the fact that it's one of the most amazing buildings we have in town, our kids are talented, more than in sports, more than in the classroom, they also perform well in the theater, these are fifth graders who did public speaking in front of a group of us. Brooke was also a judge there today too and it was, it was great, so kudos to the kiddos and kudos to all the new brand new business owners in town.
Thanks, Rich.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I hope that everyone in the room and everyone out there in TV land, I can't tell you how many times I've heard, oh, you know, we got to support the small businesses, well, you get up and you go in them and you see what they got and maybe you buy something and maybe you save the gas of going to Bangor or Ellsworth, you know, but if we, we can't just lament the fact the small businesses closed, the town has to support them. And I, I think some members of the council, maybe all members of the council, go wait and welcome new businesses when they come to town, make them feel welcome, let them know what the council got, if the council can be supportive, so I suggest that we all try to do that.
Thank you. Anything else from the council?
Just a couple of things, Don, White Town Farm Road, the town trash cleanup, I think that's been rescheduled for a week from Friday. Silver Lake Stables is going to donate used grain bags so that we don't have to use all new trash bags. That'll be available for those who want them. A couple of things from the Citizens Initiative to Reduce Plastics, we're having a couple of free films, I hope you all can come. The first one is this Tuesday at the New United Methodist Church at Three River Road. The film Bagit, that we showed you a trailer of last week, that'll be shown in its entirety. And we'll, next, a week from Friday, the twenty-fourth, at Lighthouse Arts Gallery and Education Center. The film will be shown again at four o'clock, a free public showing, hope, hope all can attend.
Do you have any more scheduled other than those two?
We're going to, we've got, we've got a couple of films, the Plastic Oceans will be shown in, shown in a little after that, but this is what we've got scheduled at this point.
Don, you, do you have any, as part of your program, any like education around recycling up until you're? I know that right now you guys want to ban plastic bags, but what, as a, as part of that, is there anything you guys are doing for like the recycling portion of it until then?
To recycle the bags?
Yeah, to like more education about people recycling the bags and places they can do that and things like that. I've just been thinking a lot about, you guys are in here quite a bit and I just, what other parts of it do we have?
Our interest is to replace plastic bags with reusable bags.
Yep.
Because I think if you look into it as we have, that any plastic bag at this point is, you're paying a huge cost. And, and that's, that's, so our intent, our intent, as we come before you relatively soon, is to, is to hopefully, we've educated ourselves and hopefully we've done some education in the community about possible replacement, but we're not interested in proliferating plastic bags.
On, I guess his note too is, sometimes there's a compromise, I think that's sort of what, what he's talking about. Sometimes if you can't get it all, but you can get some, that's better than not getting in.
Working your way up to where you want.
I think that's what he means.
Well, when we get to, when we come before the committee here in a while, we'll certainly discuss, we'll be open to discussing that, but at this point, our position is, our position is that plastic bags are.
Get rid of all or nothing?
We're paying a big cost, well, it's a small step, it's, it's, it's single-use plastic bags, we're not asking for all plastic banned, understand that, at this point. And it's, it's what we consider a very small cost, but an initial cost, initial step that will move the community in a, in a, in a good way. It's, it's a movement that's happening all over the state, all over the country and all over the world, it needs to be. Come and watch the film.
I'll, I'll ask the question again like I asked, have you guys been in contact with anybody from the legislature and what they're pushing?
Uh, we've talked to the state, yes, but.
There's actually a legislative bill going through.
Yes, there is, but we're into local control at this point, we, we want.
So you haven't talked to them at all then?
Well, we have, we've, I think we have talked to the state, I think we have.
Have you thrown your support behind that bill?
Yes, yes, oh yes, their, their position, they've already done polystyrene, which is far more extensive than we are at this point. We're asking Bucksport to take a position here relatively soon.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anything else from the council?
I've got a couple of things, do we have any updates from AIM?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned that. The, uh, the report came back from the appeal from AIM on the valuation question that we spent twenty thousand dollars, well, actually not quite, but that was, it was an up to amount to reevaluate the mill and their initial assessment was forty million dollars for the personal property related to the electrical generation. And the town's assessment was sixty million. And the amount that the appraisal came in at is a little over fifty million, which is a ten million dollar, it, it's an, it's what we anticipated this was, was going to happen at the time that if we, um, if we ended up at that number, that, that it fit in with the way we had budgeted to take care of this issue when it came up. Because we knew since the mill was purchased and all the work that was done related to the generating facilities, that there would be at some point a request to establish a baseline moving forward. And the appraisal involves the, the abatement for the eighteen, nineteen taxes, the establishment of the value for two thousand nineteen, which is that same fifty million. And then the two thousand twenty, because it's based on the income approach for what those, that generating facility can do and the futures numbers for the next three years that have been published are going this way, not this way, that, that fifty million goes to forty-six million five hundred thousand in twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty, which is the two years out, because that can be predicted based on the numbers that have already published for what their earning capacity could be based on that. All of that aside, the, the number that we, we end up with is, is manageable through what we already budgeted, through our overlay in order to take care of that abatement and to move forward. The, the estimate was always if we stayed within ten million dollars, that, that was manageable and, and it is.
Perfect.
And then the second piece of this is that while this impacts this for the nineteen, twenty year, the current year at fifty million, the sale of whole, of, from AIM to Whole Oceans provides the first arms-length transaction sale of property on that site that has occurred since the mill closed, because the sale of the mill to AIM is not deemed an arms-length transaction. It, it was a, I don't want to call it a fire sale, but that, it, it, it wasn't, it wasn't an arms, like what the state considers an arms-length transaction for assessment of property. But the sale from AIM to Main Maritime and the sale from AIM to Whole Ocean are arms-length transactions, which will reset the value of the land, which had under the existing AIM, a much lower value than it's going to have moving forward.
Have those, have those closings taken place?
No, one closing, I believe Main Maritime is estimate, meaning their closing at the first week in June. And that Whole Oceans, it, it's my understanding, will be closing within the next couple of weeks and probably sooner rather than later, but that, that will be. So both of those sales will be available as of four one nineteen in order to establish value on that site. And I recognize that one of the sales to Main Maritime is a non-taxable entity, there was a fee in lieu involved with that that will offset some of that tax loss on that property. And Whole Oceans, although they will apply for a TIF, we anticipated that as well, the, the land value established by the sale will be the baseline that that TIF moves from. So what they pay for the land at the time of its purchase is a hundred percent taxable, not eligible for a TIF. And none of the personal property that is, will be utilized through the Whole Ocean is eligible for participation in the TIF either. And that, that is estimated to generate between six and eight hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes in this first investment. So the holding a turn this year gets us to next year where our valuation base should look significantly different, so.
Do we have any update on demolition?
They're taking things down, they're, they have severed all the connections that needed to be severed electrically in order for them to bring down all of the partially deconstructed buildings that are the, the eyesore pieces will be coming down during this because there's only, they only have so much time after the sale of the property to Whole Oceans to get the rest of the site leveled. And then it's Whole Oceans intent to get its permit and begin site work, which will be extensive to level the site for.
We have any other interest, I know you can't obviously speak to specifics, but are we having any more interest in, in other parts of the site?
Well, the, the, the only other part of that side of the, that's left is the port area. And there, there is interest by an entity in acquiring that, I can't talk about it, but it's.
But AIM is held onto that themselves.
AIM is holding onto that themselves right now, but the generation, the, the generating facilities are now up and running as part of ISO New England Black Star, that's a ten-year contract that, that keeps that valuation intact and, and doing its thing in a positive. For, it's a ten-year contract that, that's significant for us in that, that even though that valuation is somewhat down, it, it's still fifty million dollars in, in valuation and it is stable in the community. So there's that, Whole Oceans will, will grow over time. Main Maritime is the, the opportunity provider for other entrepreneurs who want to have businesses in this community. And that, that port area piece, depending on what AIM looks at doing in the future, may have some. But, but I do know there's a buyer interested in that piece as well. And on the other side of the road, we have the church, there's discussion of a project on the Dead River site. We haven't, we don't have a lot of details on that, they received a substantial grant to look at a biofine process that is an alternative fuel, but that, again, that, we don't have a lot of information on that and that's on the Dead River. Piece of that, Greenhead Lobster up in the business park is looking to have testing and, um, final things ready the first week in June is when they're looking at being operational, so that's a substantial investment in the community and Pem Aqui is already up and running, so. It's a lot of activity.
I'm gonna put, Larry, I'm gonna put you on the spot, you got any update for us on Wilson Hall?
I've done some site work up there, so it looks a lot nicer around it. Big stump was kind of an eyesore, it's gone. The two, two walls that, on the west side housed a garage, those are gone. CMP's been a thrill to work with. I started with them the eighteenth of February and I think I'm all set on that now, so.
Should we power this stuff up there?
And hopefully in a couple of weeks we'll see something on the inside.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, looking back at the demolition, as I recall, we still have what, a million dollar performance bond?
The bond is still.
Yes, okay, in the event that they don't do what they say they're going to do and what they're supposed to do as far as the cleanup's concerned. Why are you smiling like you're smiling, that's true, isn't it?
Well, because they'll have bigger problems with Whole Ocean than they'll have with us, if they, I, I mean, in terms of incentives to do what they're, not that we wouldn't, but I, they're focused on getting it down as well, there's been a good deal of activity.
All right, item fourteen is a couple of upcoming public hearings and committee assignments, infrastructure. I know we have some things we have left over from that, plus it looks like you may have something else going on there also, or?
Well, the infrastructure is, if you want to continue discussion of, of.
Historic.
Historic, um, historical society building, as well as the other two items.
I wouldn't suggest we put it on there the very next meeting, but it's some time for people to look at and absorb what's there.
I think maybe if we come up with a list of sort of what needs to be addressed and then figure out who needs to be at the table and what to talk about that.
We still need one for those other two items.
You got the trails and the racecourse road.
You guys here on the twenty-third?
Sure.
Yes. Six, yep, six thirty, I mean, is that, is that half an hour enough?
Half an hour should be enough for this.
I was thinking fifteen minutes.
Well, we're gonna do six thirty though, so like him.
I spend it six o'clock, I get out of work at six.
And no other, no other committee meetings we need to have right now, if anything?
Rich, do we, can you think of anything else that, I can't help but.
It's May twenty-third?
So, not till after the next plane, we're being.
Yeah.
That's probably.
Yeah, that's different.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Item fifteen is budget review, we've got, you want to go just down through the order we have here? Education, I believe that's what Mr. Boothby is probably here for tonight.
While you're passing the packets around, key date to remember is May twenty-ninth and that's the district budget meeting, which will be held at the Performing Arts Center at the middle school at seven PM. It's an important public meeting, we always like to see folks attend and that's where we'll review the budget and call to enact them a warrant. The school board is prepared to call the warrant for the district budget, this coming up there next meeting, May fifteenth. The budget proposal is, represents a three point nine eight percent increase to a full value of fifteen million seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, it's four hundred sixty-eight dollars. That's a six hundred and three thousand one, six hundred and three thousand sixty-one dollar increase from year to year. This year, there was additional general purpose aid from the state of Maine, which is additional four hundred nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars. So the pass-through after accounting for additional revenues to the towns will be, the new money is one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars. The impact to that will be on page two. I want to go back to page one to discuss valuation, there's some information you should be aware of. I wanna go back to page one to discuss valuation, there's some information you should be aware of. The impact of that to your communities, for the town of Bucksport, that would represent a year-to-year increase of one point five percent, seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-six cents. For Orland, it represents two point five five percent increase, sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Prospect, six point four nine percent, which is thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. And Verona Island, a one point five nine percent increase, or eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. How we arrive at those numbers, you have a third page, and it shows you your cost sharing. So any monies that are above the state base allocations are divided in RSU twenty-five on a basis of fifty percent valuation and fifty percent pupil count. One, now, I'm gonna take you back to page one and talk about valuation. If you look on the first chart that I provided you, it shows you in the fifth column from the left, it says three-year average valuation. Town of Bucksport's four hundred and twenty-seven million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is actually, there's a change in the law that says the town will be assessed based on valuation of a three-year average or their last valuation, whichever is lower. So for the town of Bucksport, out of the four towns, you're the only one that has a one-year number, which is twenty eighteen, which is lower than your three-year average. Okay? How that will move forward as you take a look at the discussion you just had around valuation, you will see as your valuation changes year to year, that same, until they change the law again, which that happens on a fairly regular basis. But currently, as written, if your valuation goes down, that's where you would be assessed, based on that valuation. So what does that mean? It means that you would pay less in foundation allocation from the state when they set the mill rate, and you would have less of a share of the valuation amongst the four communities when we do our above allocated formula. So that's something to be aware of as you move forward in your conversations and you consider the impacts. Overall, when you take a look at the cost sharing, Bucksport's share is fifty-nine point seven one percent. Orland's share is twenty-six point three nine percent. Prospect, eight point one one percent. Verona Island, five point seven nine percent. Prospect is actually the highest increasing valuation in the four communities right now. Over the last ten years, they've actually got ten million dollars in valuation. Major drivers in this budget, personnel. We were able to successfully negotiate a new three-year collective bargaining agreement with the teachers. We have been challenged as we went through the closing of the mill and tightening belts. We did not keep pace with our salaries relative to our communities we're surrounded by. That's been a challenge to us. It's a challenge for attracting quality people. It's a challenge for retaining quality people. The board made a concerted effort to help move that forward, and they did. But they did so in a manner that we still haven't caught up to where we are with some surrounding communities. And we understand that, we have to take a long-term view, and we'll be progressing on that as we move forward. I'm sure you've heard about the minimum salary bill that's in front of legislature. The last information I have on that as of this morning, that is gaining traction, but there's some question as to how that's gonna roll out. The latest proposal is the first year of implementation, which would be FY twenty twenty-one, next year. Any gap that we would have for teachers who do not make that minimal threshold would be reimbursed at a hundred percent from the Department of Education. Year two, it would be a fifty percent reimbursement. Year three, a twenty-five percent reimbursement. So that will be a challenge that we're gonna have to manage as we move forward.
How, how far below are your salaries to what they're talking about?
Next year, our starting salary will be at thirty-five thousand, following year thirty-sixth, following year thirty-seventh.
And they're talking about forty thousand?
Correct.
And that's a stable, that doesn't increase each year either? We don't think that that's gonna be the base?
Not as presented now. Just to give you an idea, based on our new contract, if, if this came into, into play next year, we would be eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars that we would need to fill that gap.
But the next year, it would be lower?
There. Yes, it would be lower to a degree, depending on the movement on the scales.
But it'd also contribute less.
Correct. Ideally, I know I personally advocated for a longer window, a five-year window. I understand why they're talking three-year window, considering it's a four-year term for a governor. So, and I'm, that's just, it's basic strategy understood.
Yep.
Okay.
And this contract, the contract you just negotiated will expire after year two of the roll-up I knew you just discussed, if I'm doing it right.
Twenty twenty-three, correct. Your contract is, what, three, three years?
So I'm trying to worst-case what that, that gap would be. And it could be as high as, and I don't wanna speculate too much, but a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, depending on how teachers move up the scale.
It's gonna depend on when you have retirements and you hire new folks and where they come in on the scale and.
But it also could go the other way. If you keep folks who are already above that threshold.
Absolutely.
Or you attract folks, or you attract.
But, I mean, it's. So, it's, it's, it's something that is definitely, the, the board is aware of. It's something that they've directed me to stay on top of and continue to manage.
We don't, we're no longer, and I think you mentioned this, we're no longer getting any benefit from sudden severe, correct?
Oh, gosh, no.
Yeah, yeah, that was a couple of years.
That's long gone.
Yeah, yeah. So none of that is important in this, no, this is, this is true numbers.
These are true numbers. This is pure representation.
I've been on the health benefits side, was that a challenge this time?
Not at all. And we're one of the few locals that actually have negotiated what's called the Standard One Thousand Plan. And we were able to do that as a way to generate revenue. So the board was able to put the money savings from that program, they could put that back into salaries.
Is it HMO?
It's not an HMO, no. I am an advocate for if we could work with our insurer to be more creative, to look at higher deductible plans, so we could then cross a threshold to offer health savings accounts. But at this point in time, they're not motivated to do, to do anything.
Do we have kids from other towns besides the four in the RSU in the high school?
Oh, yes.
That's paying tuition?
Oh, yes.
And how many, how many are we not getting from our towns in the RSU that are, that are not coming to the high school? Is there a percentage I? I think it's twenty-five, the number here is twenty-five percent.
Correct. If you would refer to, page three. Can answer some of your questions. Right now, part of the agreement is that Orland will, will be, send a minimum of sixty-five percent. We're currently receiving just under seventy-five percent of those students. That's gone up ever since we've moved forward in this. We generate tuition from students coming in from twenty-four high school students, going out's nineteen. We've turned, it's positive on that.
Jim, how many, how many students do we have out of district?
Special education, Dan, yes. Right now, we have four students that are in out-of-district placements. We have recently, last year, rejoined a regional collaboration called SPURS, the Southern Drop Star Regional Program for Children with Exceptionalities. That's been in existence for forty-one years. With a big push from the state government last year that you had to join a regional management program. We work together with some partner schools. We're also in another group, and we've pulled things together. So we now have met the expectations of the law. But that gives us access to a Bangor Regional Program, and we're able to send students there at anywhere from a forty to a sixty percent discount as it would be if we sent it to some other providers of specialized programs. And we're gonna continue to leverage those relationships. We also negotiated a contract with WB Masons, so the twenty-two schools that are involved all have priority pricing. And it's all based on, everybody gets the same price, so it doesn't matter if you're Deer Isle or Bangor, you get the exact same price. And we're absolutely able to leverage the size of that organization, so they were willing to do that for us.
On a, on a separate note, but it is, what is, and, and I know we, 'cause we talked about this, what's your, what's your number one concern with the kids in school?
Right now, it's, we have a lot of students that are being impacted by the opioid crisis, behavioral challenges. We are seeing trauma. Talking to a psychologist, regional psychologist at a meeting, he's feeling that approximately fifteen out of every twenty students have experienced significant trauma in their lives. That trauma is a disruption to the education for the students, because as we know, if you're in an unstable environment, if you're in a challenging environment, it's survival first, and actualization comes after that. So we're spending a lot of time managing.
Homelessness?
Homelessness is another solid question that, we're seeing a, an increase in homeless students. It's a federal law. Families that are displaced, displaced families that end up in one of our four communities have guaranteed rights by federal law. And if they want to register at our schools, that's fine, they're welcome. But if they wanna continue at their original school, we're required to transport and send them there.
Food insecurity?
Food insecurity is high and increasing. We are actually running backpack programs at both the elementary and the middle school right now, and we have as many as forty kiddos that are receiving supplemental foods to take home on the weekends. One of the law changes that has been signed in is, it's titled the Food Shaming Bill. I don't agree with the title, but it's what they used. But now, schools have no leverage. If somebody wants a hot lunch, they get a hot lunch. If they don't pay for the hot lunch, they still get the hot lunch. That is going to be a challenge. We will have very little leverage for collecting that money. We always work with the families if they qualify for free and reduced lunch. We'll encourage them to sign up for that. A lot of families don't want to sign up for that because they don't wanna have their name in the federal registry.
And that percentage of number in, in the school system?
Right now, our free and reduced population is about fifty-six to fifty-seven percent. When I first arrived here, which would've been eleven years ago, it was thirty-five percent. So we're seeing some dramatic shifts in that area.
Jim, but, Mr. Mayor, Jim, is there a advantage then to, there are a number of disadvantages to this, but is there a budgetary advantage to then just build the school lunch cost into your budget and pay for it and not charge for school lunches?
The advantage would be that we, we'd be free of federal guidelines and oversight. The disadvantage is you're adding another two hundred thousand dollars plus into your budget. Right now, we've done a nice job controlling our food costs. We're running very close to break even in our food service program. Eleven years ago, when I got here, it was eighty-five thousand dollars in the hole. We've now got it to a point where we're about fifteen hundred dollars that's owed to us, and the town and the school board contributed, I believe in Mr. Foster, correct me if I'm wrong, about fifteen thousand last year to break even?
Yes, we, we budget a forty thousand figure, so that we're going to be covered in the poll, and we're only short fifteen, so we'll put in fifteen, we'll contribute the rest towards our resources here.
And along with the food insecurity and the backpack program, is that a, is that a national thing or is that a school thing you guys are doing here?
That's local. That's being done by our principals and our guidance counselors and a couple of volunteer teachers of the food service program. And they have a partnership with Bucksport. Bucksport Community Concerns. Anifer has been a superior partner. They very helped us out a lot. We've also had support from Bucksport Regional Health Center.
Are we doing, are we doing any sort of thing during off-school time for those, same idea?
Yep, actually on vacations, then they're given a little bit larger portions. We are running a summer lunch program in conjunction with the YMCA out of the Jewett Program. Any school-aged child eats lunch free. And we get a reimbursement from that, from the federal government. We actually generate about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars a year and profit out of that. And we're, and we're serving upwards of eighty meals a day.
To?
For the, for the summer.
But I mean, what, an age group?
Oh, anything from five-year-old to eighteen-year-old.
Right, but school-aged kids?
School-aged kids, yeah. And it's been a very positive program.
I know this is part of your presentation, but about how many of the kids go on to higher education?
Oh, goodness. Depending on the year, we will see in, in excess of sixty-five to seventy percent of our students move on to post-secondary. We are seeing a shift, which has been long overdue, in my opinion, that we're at the state level recognizing that not every child needs to go to a four-year college. That going to a vocational program, going to a one-year certification program is still a very good pathway for students. And so we are working now with the adjustment of the law. They're currently in the middle, middle of negotiations of the main graduation standards once again. It's very confusing. But getting to a point where we can actually set up pathways for students so they can go after what they want for interest, and not all students will be required to be proficient in all eight content areas.
I noticed something in the Ellsworth American Today, there was, the Ellsworth School Budget, they were talking about a feasibility study for a new HTC.
Yes.
Does that, does that incorporate us at all, or is that strictly an advantage of the program?
Antwell County Technical Center is a center by organization, which means it is a subset of the Ellsworth School Department. We are sending unit to, to that group. When it comes to the buildings and operations, they're responsible for those buildings. So that is their responsibility. So what they're planning on doing is, is, I think they budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand, right? I, I was wondering, that, that's, nothing is coming out of your pocket then?
No, don't we have, don't we have a cost savings with, with HTC where we hold a welding program here?
Yes, yep, we do. And, but that's changed a little bit, Dan, because the state funding for career and technical education, they are now sending the money that used to come to us in our two seventy-nines and our general purpose aid is now being diverted to the center. Okay, so it actually goes to Ellsworth. So we don't receive tuition money like we used to for those students. However, what we do receive is what our operational costs are for that program annually. Ellsworth has to send that money back to us, and it's about ninety-nine thousand a year. So it really is a break even, it's just how the money is transitioned.
It didn't want to transfer to the school board meeting, but I think more than half of our money goes to the school, so I think it's important to understand some of these things.
I may get a question too. I mean, you know, I'm looking at Orland numbers, so, I mean, you say that only ten of them are tuitioned out, or nineteen?
At this time, yes.
And that's just in the high school?
That's correct, only high school.
I'm, I'm guessing out of that nineteen, most of them are in the, in the senior class, 'cause if you look at their, I guess the number of kids they have, it normally read around twenty. Out of the twenty coming in next year, how many, how many are tuitioning out?
We don't know.
When, I mean?
We will know September one, when they show up.
So, that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Am I right in saying that? Ten thousand dollars a kid from the state, roughly, ten or eleven?
Roughly, but what, what happens on that poll is we're responsible to pay our per pupil cost tuition rate or the state average, whichever is lower. And our operational cost puts us typically below the state average. And what Orland has done is if you as an individual choose to send your child to a school outside of RSU twenty-five, that difference between what their tuition rate is and what RSU twenty-five has now become the responsibility of the parent. The town does not pay that.
Mr. Mayor, just, I appreciate the questions. And I wish, and I hope there's a lot of pub, public out there listening to them right now. But I don't know if you've seen the social, some of the social media stuff where there are people out there that think that, you know, if we go back to what we taught in, in nineteen sixty-five, that everything would be fine with education. So I appreciate hearing and, and, and understand clearly all the challenges that you have and we have as a society. So, thank you for those questions. As far as the, Bill Tracy, I think I've talked to you before, Bill Tracy started something, I don't know if he was doing it at Bucksport, he might have been, recognizing people going into the military as another option.
Oh, yes.
Leaving, just, just like we do when we recognize someone got a. Leaving, just, just like we do when we recognize someone got accepted into Yale or.
Yep.
E M C C or one of those. And I hope we, we continue to do that because, you know, those people who might not be ready for one career or another choose for a variety of reasons and, and end up in many cases coming out using the G I bill, going to school or. You know, doing a, a number of different things, so.
So a couple of things that we do, Rob, is if you come visit us up to the high school, you'll notice right outside the guidance store, we have a, a large wall. And when kiddos get accepted to a program, then they get to put their name up and whatever the school or program is. So we have, every year we'll have kiddos that'll be, you know, U S Marine Corps, U S Army, U S Air Force. And if they pre-enlist like that, a lot of times the service will provide a sash. And we make sure that they know that they are allowed to wear that sash in addition to the Bucksport High School sash to celebrate that.
Good to hear the general sound like a general over there.
He does. Well, he's gonna like this too, because we even have some, some of our kiddos that will do the early enlistment between their junior and, and senior year and go off to boot camp. And I, I really appreciate those because, for a number of reasons, because they come back and they've had an experience that's really a life-altering experience. But when we get to this time of the year where as seniors they start to shut down very quickly, there are some wonderful recruiting sergeants that we invite down to spend the day with the kids. And they provide some, you know.
Guidance.
It's a great opportunity. We, I know we've got people probably in this room, I know in this room that have benefited from that experience and some have come back and gotten master's degrees and moved on or done whatever they've decided to do in life, so I appreciate that.
No, and we're really supportive. We have a very clear policy that welcomes the recruiters to the school. We certainly have some guidelines, instructions that we ask them to follow, but we want them there. It's a very viable option for students. And we have, and we tend to have a number of students each year, anywhere, it's usually three to six, will make that as an option for what they want to do, and that's fantastic. Very pleased to have that.
Any quick, oh, I got one more, let's, it does look like enrollments are going up.
Enrollments are going up.
I mean, because I, I know, I mean, when my kids were in school, I think my son had one of the smallest classes ever, like fifty-six or something like a fifty-five. But it looks like, I mean, hundred and one, ninth grade, that's huge.
Yep, that, that is large. We are seeing a growth at the high school over the next few years. We'll be up over three hundred and fifty students next year. Now, a few years ago, actually, when your son was going there, we were down to two nine and three.
Yep.
And you could tell by these numbers, we're projecting out that we're going to be right around that thousand student enrollment. And high school's going to be, you know, three hundred, right around that area. So we're structuring what we're doing kind of based and trying to focus on that, meet the needs of today, but plan down the road. Couple of things I would like to share with you. We brought in pre-kindergarten programming a few years ago. State law has the expectation that by twenty twenty-one, that all pre-K programs will be full-day, full-week programs for a minimum of a hundred and sixty days per year. Through our partnership with Downey's Community Partners, they got, they received additional funding, so we will be able to offer next year a full-day four-year-old program. And.
With buzzing?
Yes.
Where are you gonna, where are you gonna hold that?
Same place it's being held right now, right in the Jewett School.
Very nice.
Yep, so we're very excited about that. The one position that we did have to add this year, it's a wonderful challenge, is at the high school, it's a halftime math position. We have a group of kiddos that are taking some very high-level math. In order to maintain our sections of engineering, we have two sections of engineering that we've offered, those are new offerings. And to, the kids are going to be taking, we're going to have a section of AP Calculus B C and also another section of.
Before calculator?
Long before calculator. And AP Calculus A B. So we're going to have, I believe, fifteen kids involved in those two sections.
That's awesome.
But in order to meet those needs, we had to bring on a halftime person so we don't have to eliminate other sections. And so we can meet the needs of kids. That's a wonderful problem. The board was very supportive. As we were going through our conversations, that was one area that the board said, we want you to get down to a certain point. We don't want to see that go. So we appreciated that, so.
Anything else from the council?
I just would like to mention the, the class sizes. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you feel as old as I do, but my last year on the school board, those two largest classes were the kindergarten and first grade class.
Yes, they were.
And the freshman and sophomore class. So, yes, and my hair was a different color at that time.
Yep, yep, and I'm seeing kids now that I saw when they were the first time they came in, I'm starting to look up at them in the eyes. It's good. We have some other very exciting news I am not allowed to share with you yet because I'm working with a benefactor who is intent to provide some support to us. When that becomes public, I will be thrilled to share it with you, but it'll be exciting. Let's just say that, and it'll be, it's a public investment. I mean, a private investment in a public entity, so.
Anything quickly from the public? I would encourage everybody to go to the May twenty-ninth school board.
District budget meeting.
Budget meeting. And that's going to be in the.
Performing Arts Center at seven o'clock. Air conditioning will work. Be more comfortable. It's a town hall-style meeting.
It gives people a chance to.
Yep, and I will present the budget. If there are questions, I can answer them as we go through the warrant articles. If there are questions, then I can answer those for folks at that time.
Thank you.
Charlie, welcome, thanks.
Tom, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Like I say, we didn't want to take over school board meetings here, but I, I think it's important for people to listen to these things, so.
I think it's great that you gave us the opportunity to answer all of your questions. I thank you all, and I think it's great that the community has this kind of interest in school. Thank you, that's great.
Next is the outside agency funding.
We've been through the budget and we had entities that are not part of the community, but are funded by the community, by the town. One section was on one specific night, and then there was a group that was discussed as part of economic development. And so what you did was listen. And in order for me to finish putting the budget together, decisions need to be made on what level of funding for each of these organizations that you wish to do. And I included in your packet a copy of our, our policy, which is the evaluation criteria that you should be looking at these entities through to see how they meet these. And then looking at the amount of money you have available, which is a total available of ninety thousand, ninety-six dollars and two cents. If you use the one percent of prior year tax commitment, the Spofford funds and the tip funds that had traditionally been used in these accounts. So the list is here, I identified on them what ones, where they are in our overall budget. I indicated which ones didn't attend the meeting, which was a requirement of our, our policy that if you want money, you need to at least show up. And three didn't. So there you have it. Now you need to figure out what.
I have a question, are those in our packet?
Yes.
Yep.
Are they sideways?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want non-sideways ones?
Thoughts?
First off, sure, all the ones that asked and weren't here, I think they should maybe on the list.
I, I, it's part of the policy, we're not going to give any money to anybody that wasn't here. I mean, I think that's why the town manager put on, did not attend, just to make sure that we were aware that they weren't here, so.
Easy one to talk about, it's probably eighty-four. The one that went up thirty thousand dollars.
That was actually what they, they asked for before, I think, too, was.
Yeah.
It was something like that.
Yeah.
I'll start, I'll start the conversation and, 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 you know, the superintendent was just in here and was talking about the needs of the community, what we're spending, what, what they're spending money out of their budget for. And when you look at preferences according to what our policy says, what, what are we, what are we looking to do? Who are we trying to help? And their partnerships and where we're spending money. We heard some, some heartfelt responses from the folks that were here talking about these things, whether it was home, whether it was the community concerns, those true social agencies that are out there truly trying to do the good thing on, on just the goodness of them donating their hours and hoping for a small amount of money from the town. When I, when I, when I hear Jim talk about forty kids getting backpacks sent home with food in it, that, that concerns me. You know, that, those are, those are hopefully the future of our town. And if, and if, if we're not going to take care of them at our level, whose responsibility should it be? And, and what are we going to do with, with, with the limited amount of funding we have? There are, there are some, there are some things on here that are nice to haves. There's some things on here that I think we should have. So to that end, you know, I, I, I came up with some numbers, I'm, I'm going to hold off and, and kind of see where the council wants to go, but I, I honestly think that we, there are some folks that may have asked for some money that I think they should deserve some more money. There are some folks that ask for money that may not get all the money that we have. We, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars almost worth of requests. And we have ninety thousand dollars to dish out. You know, if that's, if, if that's if we do all everything. So there is sixty thousand dollars of requests that aren't going to get funded. And I think, you know, it, it's not a huge amount of money, you know, in the grand scheme of things, but it's money that we want to dedicate to what we think is important. And I think it, it sends, it sends a message on, on where we're, what we're looking to do, so.
Mr. Mayor, is it your desire that we go down line by line and discuss these, other than the ones that we've already talked about in terms of the, that didn't attend the meeting or?
That is how we've done in the past.
Okay.
That is how we've done in the past. And if Rich wants to keep his calculator going, start at ninety thousand. We'll come up with gazindas and do minuses and let me know when we get to zero. I'll, I'll just, I'll start the discussion and we can talk about it. Buck Library had asked for fourteen thousand dollars. The one thing, and, and again, I, I, I hate to lead the discussion, but I just, I, I feel I'm going to just start it and, and add on, please, as you do. The one thing that I heard from them is that they didn't spend the money that we give, that they had last year for computers. When I, when I think about that, there's a couple thousand dollars that they have that they didn't spend for computers last year. We backed down their request a little bit, let them spend some of the money they had for the computers. Again, we're looking at a, at a limited amount of money, and if we want to try to spread the wealth a little bit and put it in different places. I, I, I had allocated and was looking at a number of twelve thousand for the library. Again, I'm just, I'm throwing numbers out to start with, because here I am. And, and please, comments, concerns, whole thing, no, nothing?
So they have twelve, they have two thousand left over from last year.
There was a number that they had left over from last year that she mentioned that they hadn't spent, they were going to buy computers, they didn't. And again, in my mind, I look at that, that's another expense that they had, that they can use to spend for.
Well, having been through the government budgeting process and the message to us was you get your budget one year. If you don't spend it all, you're going to get cut the next year. So what do you do?
You spend.
You spend it all. So I would hate to, I mean, if we, they've, I think consistently been fourteen thousand over the years. So there may be, you know, the year that, so I would hate to send a message that, to anybody that, well, you better spend it all, you're not going to get it next year. I think they've been consistently, except for maybe last year. So I would hope to keep it at fourteen. My recommendation.
Fourteen?
I, I, I think with a fourteen, but maybe, maybe we talk to them and say, hey, you know, I mean, if, if this is money you truly need, you know, don't save it. Don't spend it, wa, waste it, but, you know, get the stuff you need.
That's hard to say too. I, I think that if we can cut it back a little bit, we cut it back where we're limited on the amount of money that we're spending out there. I mean, I would even think ten.
I'd be with Rob, fourteen. I mean, it's a library, it's an institution.
I'm in favor of fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, me too. I'm on the library board and I think the message is you go out, you better spend it all. But I think it should be fourteen. I think that's a pretty, pretty small amount to start with.
Okay. Pencil them at fourteen, Rich, do a minus for me there. Huh? I hear you. I, I got that one. I didn't, I didn't take the B C math, but I do know that one.
Maybe we should flip a coin, we're not taking these in alphabetical order.
Next was Fort Knox, eighteen hundred and part of that, I think I heard running the lights and doing those other things. And I'll leave it open, I'll, I'll go ahead and start, somebody.
Well, I did have a question about that, and, and it was mentioned briefly at the last meeting where there, unless I'm mistaken, there was not a representative from friends of Fort Knox here, but there's sort of an agreement that, okay.
If we got the lights on, right?
That's right.
If we want the lights on.
If you want the lights on.
I just wanted to make sure. I understood that correctly, so, okay.
Thoughts on eighteen, last more?
That's been consistent for every year. I mean, that's, that's a light bill.
Okay. Everybody good with eighteen?
Yep.
Can we put solar panels on them soon? Can we put solar panels on the bridge? And just so everybody, I'm sure people have heard, but they're not going to open up the observatory probably till the end of the month now, by the sounds of it, so.
It has a bad.
Sixteen fifty.
The fire's protection system is not working.
Next, we have in a line was the Chamber of Commerce asking for nine thousand. And also on that line was the Bay Festival for fifteen thousand. Anybody want to start? This is where I, this is where I started again, looking at where our money's going to end up and, and what we're going to end up having. And on a, this may have been actually the last one I did because my number is all over the place. But on a twenty-four thousand dollar request, I had them down at nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, because that's what I had number, for number left, ninety thousand when I came through it. Again, we want it, we want to, we want to help out the agencies that we can where we, where we feel we have enough money to spend. Well, and with theirs, they did say they reduced the price, the salary they're giving the director or the coordinator by five thousand, so it does. I mean, that's, that's just reasonable.
For history in this line item, prior to three years ago, there was one appropriation. The one appropriation was thirteen thousand dollars a year. And nine thousand of that was an appropriation for the chamber and four thousand was an appropriation for, for the fireworks for the Bay Festival. And when we had our two hundred and whatever birthday it was, the town increased an amount for that year for the Bay Festival. Slash birthday.
Birthday, right.
And the following year, which was last year, that request came through separately with a reduction of the four thousand from the cham, from what was a combined to nine thousand for the chamber as a line item, but an increase of eleven thousand to the Bay Festival from the four thousand that it was getting. So the, the town never went back to its former funding model for the Bay Festival following the.
Two twenty-five.
Birthday party. You.
You kept it up high.
You, you kept it at an eleven thousand. Last year it was eleven. If you go to the year before the Bay Festival, it was nine thousand for the chamber, four thousand for the festival, all in one lump for thirteen thousand dollars. And then we had the festival and we added thirty-five thousand dollars to the bottom line. And then the next year, the chamber request was the nine that they've traditionally gotten, but the amount separated out now for the Bay Festival was fifteen thousand dollars instead of four thousand dollars. And that never went back to the four thousand dollar for the, because I believe that the chamber hired a coordinator.
For that, right?
For that, and that's what they're using the majority of that.
For this time also, right, yeah.
So, so this is just history, or history for where, how we got to where we are, that there, three years ago, there was one. there, three years ago, there was one line item, it was thirteen thousand dollars, and it was four for one, nine for the other, and now it's nine for one and fifteen for the other, so that is, that's.
And what do towns normally, what's your experience with towns and what they contribute to the chamber? Or cities, and is there, is it all over the map, or is...
I think it's consistent, they contribute to the chamber. I think that the history of the Bay Festival is, from my understanding, was that once upon a time, the mill paid for the whole thing. I mean, that was the origination of, of it, and once the parent kicked the kid out of the house, which is sort of what happened with the mill and its former donation habits, the chamber took on that, and the town contributed for fireworks. And the change now is that the town is also contributing for personnel to manage this festival. Is that an accurate assessment?
And it bears the question, I mean, if we're doing a festival like this for economic development, and we're changing as a town, should we look to change what we're doing there? Because I say from a business community, that money would be better spent in the spring and the fall, or early summer and late summer versus end of July. The chamber has a request for twenty-four thousand. Do I have any thoughts on...
Nineteen. Nine and ten.
So we go back to the original, thirteen. Any other council members? This is, we need help, folks, we can't sit here, because if it's on Peter's numbers, then somebody's not going to be happy.
I guess I'd split the difference, fifteen, sixteen, in that range, sixteen.
After listening to Sue explain those things, I'm more inclined towards the fifteen thousand. That makes sense, and sort of answers our question, and maybe we can go someplace else with something else, so. You have fifteen, one wants?
I'm fine with fifteen.
Everybody good with fifteen?
Yes.
Fifteen thousand, Richard.
So that's the combined nine and six?
That's the combined, yeah, correct. Correct. No other requests until we get to Wednesday on Main, ask for four thousand?
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
I thought she asked for fourteen.
No.
No.
No plums on four thousand?
I have no, I have no plums.
Okay, four thousand for Wednesday on Main. Main Street Bucksport, twenty thousand. What's that number at, Rich?
Fifty-five-two.
These, these last two on this line, and you made the point, Peter, which is a good point, about the social service agencies and people out there in need, is the other side of it is generating, and we don't know specifically how much this generates, these two entities generate to the town, and how much they contribute, but, so I think we have to balance somehow, looking at those in need with revenue generating, economic development generating activity, and they're not apples and apples, certainly, but.
Over this year, I've, like, you know, the first couple of years that with Main Street, there was a communication gap, I think, and we had asked, and then we asked for more communication, and I was actually impressed with the communication over the last year that, that the organization had with the council, and, you know, I like the things that are being done, but one thing I would, I would ask is that, you know, I think it was last, we, last meeting or the one before, we asked a couple of different agencies if they thought they were going to be sustainable or self-sustainable, on trying to, I'm not saying that a hundred percent there, but at least start trying to get there, if that makes sense. In, in, from what I saw and what John Paul presented, I thought he did a good job presenting it, in, in what you guys have done to get grants, and, and, I mean, I'd love to see it go from the twenty that it is, you know, down to a more manageable, I say manageable, not that twenty isn't, but just, it start decreasing over the, over time. But I, I was happy with what, what I saw this year in, in the presentation of John Paul and in the communication that we had.
What did you say our number was again?
Fifty-five thousand, two hundred.
And I just, and I just throw this out there, and like I said, I hoped everybody was going to look at this prior to it and come up with some numbers. If you take just the request, not counting the thirty-one thousand, but if you look at the bottom line, and you take just the request, what they've asked for is fifty thousand. So keep that in mind of when we're thinking about where we're going to end up here. I feel when we asked the question to them, if they felt like they could be self-sustainable, I believe the answer was that we'd have to do some more fundraising, we'd have to, you know, have a plan, and I think that that, you know, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money to hand over. So I think if they are able to be self-sustainable, and they are able to do the extra fundraising, then maybe that's where we need to go.
I mean, I would say.
I mean, I'm not saying cut them off completely, but.
I mean, I would say that they've made the effort, to fundraise has been substantial, and maybe twenty isn't the number, I don't know, but I think what we challenged them to do, they continue to do that and more in terms of grants, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine seventy-four, four years, and you need, somebody has to write the grants, and you need that effort there, but maybe, I don't know what the number is specifically, but.
I think last year, what, what the council asked them for last year, I think they did this year. I, I think, we didn't ask them to, that wasn't a question that was asked last year. I think if that question would have been asked last year, I think I would have felt a little different, because I think they could have done more to become, you know, self-sustainable, I guess is what it's called. I think moving forward, and I agree, I'm not, I think moving forward, though, that that is a plan, that should be a plan of theirs, is, is, you know, that twenty comes, you know, starts going the other direction.
So maybe we compromise at ten.
My understanding, my understanding was that Main Street had generated more than twice the amount that the council contributed last year, and I think like sixty-four hundred or six thousand, ten Ds, which is a lot of, I don't know how many of those same people, but certainly a lot of people played a role in it, and so, and they, I looked over the criteria of all these people, and they certainly did a very nice job in meeting all the criteria of what we're looking for with a voluntary organization like this. And there were a lot of, I think there were quite a few volunteers who probably, I don't know, or hours, that too, with the volunteer hours, that was substantial, the community involved.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add, I think when you look at what Main Street Bucksport has done, especially compared to what the asks were last year, having, I mean, I went back and did a little bit of looking into that as well, as well as what they bring, what they've managed to bring back into the town grant-wise, and not just for themselves, but I think one thing that we've talked about is what, how well groups are working with one another. I think Main Street Bucksport has written grants for other similar organizations in town as well, Wednesdays on Main being an example. But I, looking at all that, looking at the asks and what this council asked last year, I'm in favor of funding Main Street Bucksport at the twenty thousand dollar rate.
Mark? I can't. That number's twenty-two percent of the money that we have to give out, that, you know, when you look at that, it's, that's a large number. I asked the question, what they had in the bank, and I'm pretty sure it was over thirty thousand dollars. When I hear that number of an operating budget that was sixty thousand or seventy thousand... I don't think that's true. I mean, that's not. That's the number we got. No, I don't, if you want the number, you can get the number, but that's not. That was the number we were given that night.
I think he said fourteen that night, but today it's about twelve thousand dollars. So most of our income comes from our biggest events, which are the Bucksport Arts Festival.
We've already had testimony, and, and.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say, so our, our bank account dips low this time of year, and then sort of tends to go back up in the.
I don't think it was testimony, I mean, we've got, if she's got updated information, we should hear it, right?
But we, but, I don't know, I mean, because.
We can't throw out a thirty thousand dollar number, it's not accurate. It's not accurate, she's telling you it's not accurate.
It's, it's twelve. I think he said fourteen, but it's twelve.
Well, anyways, we should get the right information, is what I'm saying.
All right.
It's always nice, it's always nice to have the right information.
Yeah, we got to have the facts. It is.
That's what I'm saying.
You're right. So where's everybody at?
Can I say something? The Main Street Bucksport is, and I've said this before, but I think we lose sight of it, is part of a network of Main Street programs across the state that, that is modeled after a process that the town supported before Main Street Bucksport. You paid dues to the Maine Development Foundation to be part of this program before anyone actually did anything with it. And the, the model is to augment economic development activity in communities, and the thought is that, that these organizations don't become totally self-sustaining, because the amount that communities invest in these is a smaller amount than they would have to invest in hiring additional staff people on their own to try and bring this activity to the community. I only mention this because this, this is, it's, Main Street Bucksport is modeled exactly after the state program that you bought into, and, and the reason that there's a percentage contribution is that that's the way these organizations are, are structured, because they're deemed to be part of the economic development activity of the community, and that's just.
That's just background material, but that, but that's how it works.
I have a question then, Sue. Should that be funded differently then? Should, so, and what I mean by is, should that not be part of these agencies?
That, that is, we, because it's a group outs, because we, the only thing we fund, the only thing we look at funding on its, like, regular stuff, is things that the town controls, control issues. And so the, the other things that the town doesn't have control over, but which deems important enough to give money to, have, have always been set aside so that the community can understand what the council is investing in beyond its own employees, beyond the people that you pay, beyond the, the fire guy and the police guy and public work, what we're doing with, with their money, our money, I do it too, I pay here, but, so that's why, but this year, we, we talked about these groups in the budgets where they actually are a piece of, which is why we talked about Main Street Bucksport and Wednesdays on Main under economic development, because their goal is to increase that kind of activity in the community, and so they were there. And the social agencies, which are all the people that are trying to feed the hungry and, and take care of the people that are falling through the cracks, are the social agencies that are on the bottom part of that. We've got a top part of the list, and we've got a bottom part of the list, and they're completely different entities, and we separated them out, because talking about them all at the same time was like apples and oranges, and made for a harder discussion in terms of that. But at the end of the day, we're back here because, going through this, because you've chosen to fund. If the council wanted to fund Main Street Bucksport as a contract item under economic development, it, it could do that, but it's not how you've traditionally looked at this, because it's not an organization that you make the rules for.
And I think that's kind of the rub with me, is that what we're trying to do is compare what appear to be, you know, humanitarian, really, really important things with economic development activity, which is very, very important as well, but, you know.
They're not the same thing.
They're not anywhere near the same thing, and I know we're, we're here, we.
May the Economic Development Director please interject for a second, because you're putting the Economic Development Director in a very tough spot right now. You've just cut the Chamber of Commerce nine thousand dollars. I wish I would have said something a little bit earlier, that I thought you should have started with the social agencies. If the council's main concern was to deal with that, and maybe take this up at a later time, and fund those at the level you would like to, because putting it this way, economic development, economic development, it's making it sound like the Economic Development Director is weighing your decision on how these guys are being added, and I personally don't want to have this conversation with the chamber, since I have no input in this at all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It'd be helpful to me, could you just list the, I don't know how many there are, the other agencies that are looking for money, could you just run through that?
Go down through them? Sure. Down East Community Partners asked for thirty-one thousand dollars. Bucksport Community Concerns, forty-five hundred. Down East Transportation, thirty-five ninety-two. Eastern Area Agency on Aging, twenty-five hundred. Childcare Center, two thousand. Bucksport Healthy Community, Communities Coalition, fifteen thousand. Senior Citizens Group, six thousand. Hospice of Hancock, one thousand. Life Flight Foundation, one thousand two hundred and thirty-one. Home, five thousand. Main Family Planning, WIC, four thousand eight hundred and fifteen. Families First Community Center, one thousand. Red Cross, twenty-five hundred. Home Health Hospice, Eastern Main Health Services, two hundred and fifty. Open Door Recovery Center, a thousand. Health Equity Alliance, five hundred. Thank you.
Can I just interject one thing, as I'm over here, shall I go up there?
Sure.
It's a question.
No.
Where is the ceiling? I've been away in Albuquerque visiting grandchildren.
My name is Hans, Rachel's, I'm a citizen of the town. I've been away in Albuquerque visiting my grandchildren, so I'm not sure what leads up to this, but where is the ceiling? I mean, as a citizen of the town, I hear all of these requests, they all seem so legitimate. I'm happy to pay more in taxes or whatever to make it happen. Where did the ceiling come from?
It was voted on by the council to limit.
That was.
It was.
Okay. And that's carved in stone?
It is. Today it is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So where are we at on Main Street Bucksport, folks? About ten thousand. I still feel like we need to, we need to make cuts in order to put money in other places. They're, they're able to sustain at some, some level a budget. I mean, they, they, you guys are very, and then, not taking away from the people that are working there, it's not personal, it's, it's budget, and if we need to cut some of this money back, then we got to find places to do it, and this is one of the places to do it. Rob, I heard you say twenty.
I just, I support what Paul said, twenty. I also add that maybe we could at least, on this one, go with whatever we vote on, if we're going to take a vote, if we don't have an agreement.
I, I don't think, yeah.
And then move forward, and then jump back if we think that there's something else.
I guess there's nothing set in stone here, we've got a part of money.
And try to do it.
And I mean, I'm, I'm throwing these things out the list, order listed, and Rich has a valid point, that maybe we should have started at the bottom. You know, I mean, there's not, there's nothing that we've said tonight, you know, I mean, I can turn around, we can stop right now, we can go start at the bottom. You know, I mean, we've spent twenty-five minutes doing this, if we start at the bottom, and we got X, then we have a discussion, then we end up with where we end up, and we may end up with zeros at the top, you know?
Is your, would the process be, if we reach an item like this one, would we vote, we've got two different proposals, would we vote on those to get through this item, or what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
I don't know if we're, we're gonna reach consensus yet.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna reach consensus on any of it.
You know, I, I'm, I'm, Mayor, I'm kinda throwing up because we didn't cut the chamber. We cut the Bay Festival. It went from four thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand and for some reason, they decided to keep asking for fifteen. Um, I don't, I don't, we, we didn't cut the chamber itself. Chamber asked for nine thousand, we gave them nine thousand. That, that's what they asked for. I'm kinda confused where, um, this whole thing got and, and, you know, we, I hate it that we put us, ourselves here because we put ourselves with a ceiling. That's the problem. And I, I had thought it was gonna be a problem when we did the ceiling, but, um, because there are, there are a lot of groups here. I'd like to give them to them all to be, actually, the ones that already haven't, didn't show up. Just because I think they're all good groups, but.
Well, it's not saying you can't give them all something.
Right, I need it.
I mean, I'll be giving what they requested. I mean.
Yeah. At, 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 at budget time, if we don't have caps and ceilings on what we're spending, we're gonna go through the roof.
So, we, you know, we better set some limits on where we're at. I guess it's just a matter of, so I'll tell you what, we'll scrap the top, Sue. And I like, I'm gonna go with Rich's idea to start at the bottom and we'll go from there. Get your calculator back to ninety, please. Down East Community Partners asked for thirty one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Last year, we gave them fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Everybody's good with fifteen hundred or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Bucksport Community Concerns asked for forty-five hundred. Forty-five hundred.
That has traditionally been listed as an offset with the Spofford funds. That Spofford money that is shown on the thing has traditionally been, um, identified for use in that program.
So, now I have it, so, that forty-five hundred comes from those funds?
Comes from the ninety.
Comes from the ninety, but the source of it is the Spofford fund. It's not the seventy thousand dollar ceiling amount. It comes out of that forty-five hundred dollar Spofford money that we have in a separate fund.
So, forty-five hundred. I sat here listening to Sue pretend to say we send Bucksport Community Concerns home with forty kids packaged lunches along with a Wednesday when you see the parking lot full up there. I think that should be closer to six thousand dollars. You know, I, I, again, what are we, what are, what are we, what are we trying to? Who, when you look at, at what we're talking about in our policy, our preferences, who we're giving, who we're giving those to and what benefits, um, what else is up here that doesn't do this or that does do this? They're helping the school, they're helping, they're helping the community.
I mean, if they needed an additional request, they could also come back.
But I think, but we're, we're, we're working off a budget on these things here. Anybody can come back.
Of course. But that's what they're asking for, is forty-five hundred.
And, and my, my, my thought was like, it is, like, I did last year with the, with the childcare center. I, I would like to see an increase. I'd, I'd throw that number out there.
I agree with that. I, working in the school system, you don't even understand how important those lunch bags or those food bags are for these kids. And I feel that Bucksport Community Concerns does a huge amount for the town of Bucksport. And they have since forever since, and I agree, I think we need to up it to six.
I had eight thousand written down, so I came down.
I'd support six. I'd support that.
What are, what are we going on? What are we talking about?
Six. I mean, there's four people. Is that how we're gonna go? Majority rules? That works? I don't issue with six either. That works. Okay. Down East Transportation, thirty-five ninety-two. That's the number we've given them the whole time. That's the service, again, that's provided and then we work on. Everybody else said with thirty-five ninety-two for them? Yep. Eastern Area Agency on Aging, um, a couple of years ago, they asked for fifteen. Last year, they asked for twenty, uh, this year, they asked for, last year, they asked for twenty-five. This year, they asked for twenty-five.
But they got fifteen and seventeen.
Seventeen, eighteen, correct, correct. Thoughts? I propose one thousand dollars. One thousand? Yes.
Yeah, better than that.
You good on one thousand? One thousand? One thousand. Childcare Center, um, two years ago, it was two thousand. Last year, it was twenty-five hundred. They've requested two thousand.
Why'd they go down? Did it, did she say?
I asked that question. They, they, they asked two thousand the year before and it was decided to give them twenty-five hundred. They had some building needs that they were talking about.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, I'm good with two thousand.
I am as well. You got two thousand?
Yeah.
Bucksport Healthy Community Coalition, um, there was nothing given last year and this year, they've asked for fifteen thousand.
Remember that, uh, could somebody refresh my memory on the discussion, uh, why there was nothing?
They didn't have a, they were going through, they were going through a transition.
Reorganization, wasn't it? Yeah.
They were, they had had a, uh, study done to look at, um, whether or not they were going to continue or, or if they continued what model they would use. And they went back to, um, a volunteer-driven organization. But, the presentation this year related to the fact that they want to hire someone to answer the phone for the Thriving in Place.
Thriving in Place, right.
Questions on the, uh.
Resources or something like that.
What, what did we?
Give them sixteen, seventeen?
We gave them, as a matter of fact.
I figured you would have that. It just wasn't on here. Zero, zero to fifteen is pretty steep for me.
What were they called again?
Bucksport Health Community.
I think it was fifteen thousand.
I think it was too.
Were you giving fifteen thousand there?
Well, it was fifteen thousand and the Thriving in Place program was in place.
And it had a director at that point.
It had a director.
Is it present, is it presently in place?
They don't have a director at the moment.
They don't.
So, we don't even know if this program is, is gonna go.
It was funded at twenty thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We used to?
Yes, sir. It was funded that way for years. Last year was the first year it didn't fund it.
Well, this says two years. We haven't.
No, it was just one year.
Oh, you're looking at, oh, last year, Councilor Rabs brought up the idea because he was, I was on the board. He, there went after, went on board. I went off the board. The, the monies they had, had, the monies they had ended. They went through two different executive directors. It started with James Bradney and ended with, um, the woman right after, after Jim. And then they moved into a little area to the other side of where Net was. A little while there, Wayne Stanley was handling some of their phone calls for them as well. They had no one to do it. Which for Net diverted, not Net.
Actually, they're paying the Y to answer the phone for them.
So, for all intents and purposes, we're in the same situation with Bucksport Healthy Co- Communities Coalition that we were last year? In terms of having no director in the.
They're not gonna have a director again. They're.
Here's an easy answer. I would say zero and they can come back and ask like they did before. And if, if they make a determination to come back and ask, um, they never came back after Mr. Rabs had made that, um, suggestion to them, so.
I say so shall it be.
I think, I think we're in the same place. Everybody okay with that? Yes.
Yeah.
Senior Citizens Group, six thousand?
Yes.
Six thousand. Everybody good on six thousand? Yes.
Yep.
Do, do, Hospice of Hancock, um, asked for a thousand.
You missed them, sir.
No, they didn't attend.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
I'm in favor of one thousand dollars. Yep. Everybody good on Hospice of Hancock, one thousand? Yes. Rich, where are we at?
Fifty-eight thousand.
Awesome, awesome. Appreciate it, man. Lifeflight Foundation, twelve thirty-one.
One thousand.
I'm in favor of twelve thirty-one. Twelve thirty-one?
Twelve thirty-one.
Twelve thirty-one?
I'm old enough to be in favor of twelve thirty-one, yeah.
Home Co-op, five thousand.
They're not.
Or Home, I don't know if it's Home Co-op, it's Home.
It's Home.
Yeah, Home.
I gotta call, does Olin, uh, Olin give them anything?
They said they did.
Again, I think it's one of those organizations that are helping people directly. I've had students go there and live there for months and have a place to go. I'm gonna say five thousand.
Yeah, they do a lot in our community. And again, I heard the superintendent talk about homelessness, you know, and that's, that's, we, we all know. Five thousand, be okay with that? Maine Family Planning, WIC, um, asked for forty-eight hundred and fifteen and we gave them five hundred.
Five hundred.
And five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Families First Community Center, um, I believe this is their first request. They've asked for a thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, they don't even have a functioning facility at this point. I'd say zero.
Zero okay on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Red Cross, um, asked for twenty-five hundred. Last year, we gave them three hundred. And again, Red Cross is one of those organizations that's gonna ask and they're gonna appreciate anything that you give them. Um, I think last year's three hundred is, is fair where we're at.
Yep.
Everybody okay with that? And that was the statement from the Red Cross. Home Health Hospice, EMHS, um, asked for two fifty. That's what we gave them last year.
Two fifty.
Two fifty. Everybody good for two fifty? Open Door Recovery Center, um, this is their first ask for a thousand.
Where is that?
I mean, if we use the criteria, yeah.
Space at Ellsworth, I believe.
I'll just throw out that the number one, when I asked the superintendent what the issues were, his first response was opioid crisis. You know, again, you, these folks are doing something to combat that. They've asked for something. I, I wrote down five hundred for my number. As have I.
Good, good, good.
Everybody good with five hundred there? Yes. Help Fam- Health Equity Alliance, um, asked for five. And I apologize, I cannot remember what these folks.
I'm think that I wasn't, I, I'm not sure they attended.
They were not here. I don't.
They didn't, they didn't attend.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, they.
Neither did the next one.
Right, all right. Rich, what's that total?
Sixty-one thousand, one twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's what's left?
Yes, sir. Well, remember, one group asked for thirty-one, you gave them fifteen. One group asked for fifteen, you gave them zero.
Sixty-one what?
Sixty-one thousand, one twenty-seven.
We could start talking about splitting among the council, but that's probably.
Yeah, they spent twenty-nine thousand, eight, seven, three.
My math has that like, um.
There's sixty-two, there's sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and over, based on what was asked, left, right?
Right. We have sixty-three thousand, eight hundred that was asked. What did you say the number was?
Sixty-one thousand, one twenty-seven, or eighty-five.
You say sixty-one?
Sixty-one.
We're close.
That's a crap. I'm sorry. It's a long night, it's a long night. What'd you say to me anyway, Sue? Apologizing TV land.
What, twenty-eight, what, twenty-eight hundred bucks off? Twenty-one, twenty-four hundred?
I'm gonna throw this out and I'm gonna make it easy on the council, I hope. We had offered everybody, everything that they'd asked except for the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. You've got the ninety thousand. My assumption is that the folks here wanna spend the ninety thousand because that's what they asked for when they got the one percent. You take the other ask and take whatever's left over and go to the chamber and that, it's gonna be a little less than their twenty-four thousand, but it's gonna be closer to twenty-two or something.
Could we specify the Bay Festival? Because the chamber's nine thousand is, 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 they're legitimate.
We're talking about.
So, if the reduction in airline items came.
The number would be the Bay Festival then.
Would be the, by that twenty-eight hundred dollars.
So, instead of fifteen, it would be, you know.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Rich, do you, do your minuses. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Minus fourteen thousand.
Yes.
Minus eighteen hundred.
Yes.
Minus nine thousand.
Yes.
Minus four thousand.
Yes.
Minus twenty thousand. What do you have left over?
Eleven thousand, three twenty-seven.
That's your Bay Festival number. If that, that, I, I assume that's what I'm hearing around the councils, that's what everybody wanted to do? Is everybody happy with?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Now, I would, can I, I won't be here for the next one, but, um, I would hope that, I'm not saying, I, I didn't, I didn't mean when I said semi-sustainable. But, we, we could make progress on, you know, maybe it's eighteen thousand, you know? Because you were able to raise an extra two thousand, you know what I mean? Something like that. I think that would be the only thing. But, again, you did everything that we asked you to do last year. I appreciate it.
And I, and I apologize upfront. We should've taken the bottom agencies first. Rich had an absolute great point. Um, that, that's, that is two separate entities and you had, you had easier ask, I think, on the bottom half.
I think all of them, as you, as you, you know, mentioned, when we were putting this in place is to, if we could get all of them to do the kind of data crunching and the work that, that Wednesday's, uh, that Main Street did and a few others to help us, particularly in the social service agency. And a lot of them crunched some numbers and that.
There were better, there were better presentations this year than I think we've seen. And I think having this in place helped out doing that, so.
That email that John Paul sent with all those numbers, it was wonderful.
Yes.
And, and then. I'm not a hu- I'm not a mathematician, but it was, I like that.
So, everybody's, we're, we're ready for the next item? I just wanted to add one thing if I could, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to say that somebody once compared the budget process to the making of sausage and that when it's all said and done, that, you know, it's probably okay, but you don't wanna watch it, um, being done. And I think that in this case, this was a very valuable exercise, not just for a first, uh, first-year councilman, but I think for the public to see as well. If there's one thing that I tend to harp on, it's that budgets are priorities. And I think that the public now has a good glimpse into what this council's priorities are. And so, I, I'll leave it at that. But, this was a very useful exercise for, for me and I hope for the entire council. Thank you. Item C on the budget review is overall review.
Yes, and that is on the computer. Which is not set up.
Mayor, while she gets that ready, can I ask a, a quick question?
I don't know if I can answer it. Go ahead.
So, I understand the ninety thousand, hundred percent. That's what we budget for. These places like Home, um, you know, the Community Concern, in, you know, like the, the one we up there, Bucksport Community Concern. If they, if they need more monies, there is a, I guess, pot that, that can be drawn from or is that?
We have allocated fund balance that absolutely anybody could.
Okay, I just want.
I mean, that's what we've done in the past with all of these agencies. That's what we did with them this year.
Right.
You know, um, it is there, but again, you gotta have a set budget to start with.
No, I'm tracking with that. Could I?
We have a process and then we can.
Yeah, perfect.
Because then, then that gives everybody the, you know, you can take a fresh look at just one or whatever the case is.
I was surprised in doing this, you know, like fourth, fifth budget, that, that Home had never asked for anything.
They have a new director.
New ownership. Is it new ownership?
Home.
Yeah.
They, they have, they get a lot, they get a lot of funds from around.
They do.
Which is, which is. Though I still think it's important to contribute to it.
Oh, I understand.
We have a lot of kids that go there, families that go there.
Spend a lot of money on schools and then you send a kid to school hungry. All that money you spend on schools is worthless.
I still gotta feed mine.
He's gonna be taking care of you soon.
Yeah.
I actually work early.
Yeah. Did you forget the best pizza? No.
Okay, it's not. It's, that will be.
That's my good time. One, seven, nine, they really did open up like priorities, like where are you gonna?
I need technical assistance. Do you mind? Do this presentation and then we'll. It's on the.
It's on the drive. Is that, is that the thing you just put up here this afternoon?
Yes. PowerPoint.
It is pretty. It is pretty.
I can't...
Yeah. I meant to make it up for that portico place today.
Just set our clock back to a technical... He's gonna be writing the minutes.
It's nice in there.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's nice.
I'll tell ya, I've been spending some money around here. I've been to every restaurant in the last two weeks here. I bet I've, I bet I've spent a thousand bucks. I'll remind you, you're still in the air. I didn't say anything bad. I wouldn't show where you were going.
So just go forward, this is gonna be the, the budget review, overview of the draft budget proposal that Sue has put together, that we've talked about for the last month and a half. Should be on all your drives, if you wanna look at it.
Do I get this to full screen?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I'm trying to even get my screen up.
I always double-click it, Rob, it usually works.
I may need the...
Can I?
Person who was running our video equipment to tell me why I'm not seeing this on screen. Click in, or...
Here he comes.
Council?
Here comes help.
Help is necessary. Hey, Jim.
Hey, how are ya?
I would love to make that appear on that screen.
It presents.
Present?
Right there.
Look at that.
Makes sense, I guess.
There we go.
Mine won't even know if I moved the sensor.
Hours. Twice. These chairs are pretty comfortable. Jesus Christ, got this mac and cheese.
So where's my other?
Awesome, really. I haven't had it in a couple of years, just a couple of times.
I wanna do a slide.
I'm trying to go there, every other week. Lately, it's been once a week.
Ta-da!
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay, wait, hold it. Good question. I can't see what I'm doing.
I mean, that's one heck of a beard you got there. I like it.
You don't have to cut it anymore for the uniform, it's quite nice.
Don. Don, did you get a copy of this?
Okay, um... So, we've talked about budget now for a couple of months, and this translates what we've talked about into what each department would cost, and what its impact is to the tax burden. So, the budget goals this year were pretty simple. The first one was no mill rate increase. We will attain that. Then we want improvements at the waterfront, we want infrastructure improvements, roads have been discussed, and we wanna continue to provide full community services. So what did we do in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, some of the high points? We completed the solar project at the town garage. We've started the solar project at the treatment plant. The Greenhead Lobster project is developed and ready to go online the first of June. Pemaquid Muscle is already in operation. Our town clerk retired, and, and we hired a new one. Our fire chief retired, and applications for that position closed next Friday. And the main maritime project has been through the entire permitting process through the planning board, and is ready to go forward. Pollutions is set to close on their land purchase in, in May of this year, and it's imminent, is the best I can tell you. There is an implementation committee working on the adapt plan recommendations, and, and what can be done with those. Grant was received to complete cable and internet on Millvale and Bucks Mills, which we accepted this year. And a grant was received to upgrade the fuel facilities at the Marina. Revenue impacts to this budget, a positive one is that the state budget currently contains an additional half percent for revenue sharing, which would result for us in an additional seventy-five thousand dollars a year in that revenue line item. There are discussions for a higher percentage, the, the percentage of state tax that's supposed to go to revenue sharing is five percent. This additional seventy-five thousand takes them to two and a half percent. There's discussions of making it more than two and a half percent. If it does, that revenue number would go up. Our excise tax collection has increased. We had budgeted eight hundred thousand last year. We will receive close to eight hundred and fifty thousand this year. I'm budgeting for an additional forty thousand, and revenue was an offset from that income. Another impact is that the appeal of the mill valuation, which we talked about earlier, results in a lower valuation of approximately ten million dollars. Fortunately, this had been anticipated, and the funding has already been set aside to cover the cost of that loss. And the school budget impact, I didn't have the exact number until you came here with that paper tonight, we had it in tonight, but is less than seventy-five thousand, seventy thousand. The main reason they've been able to keep that increase that minimal is the additional state funding of over four hundred thousand dollars has helped to upset their increases, which is positive for the community, because our share isn't going up that much. So we received fees from the state. The homestead, which is twenty thousand dollars in exempt value for everyone who owns their own home in Bucksport, who has owned it for more than a year, is reimbursed to the community to the tune of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The business equipment tax exemption reimbursement is another, when state law was changed, that exempted certain business equipment tax from taxation, the state is responsible for paying the town back a certain percentage of that, that's sixty-five thousand dollars. And the state revenue sharing, and we talked about the additional seventy-five, prior to this, it was three hundred. So that will be approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars this year. And veterans reimbursement, another valuation loss that's reimbursed by the state. Tree growth, the same thing. For people who have their property in tree growth, which reduces its value substantially for taxation purpose, the state reimburses the town a percentage of that difference. So our total state revenues to offset taxation is seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. I'm at, we're talking about using four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fund balance. It says eighteen nineteen, it should say nineteen twenty. We used the same amount last year. And the majority of that will be offset by unexpended funds from the eighteen nineteen budget, which is generally how we've done this. We've looked at remainder, so that we're not drawing down on it. We're just utilizing what we put back. And it's also recommending that we use a hundred thousand from our education designated reserve to offset the RSU bill, because we still have funding in that, that was the result of the RSU formation. So, when we were doing the budget, everyone was interested in where the revenues were, and those were a separate item at the end. This presentation shows the items that have offsets to their budgets. General Government, which we discussed, is administration and code enforcement, and assessing, and economic development, and insurances, and municipal building, and contingency. Totals, all of those budgets total in, in our presentation is one point nine four one million. Offsets from revenues are, are items that are, are collected by or impacted from the people who do that work. Code excise tax, fifty-five hundred, auto reg fees, sixteen thousand. Tax lien costs, which is a pass-through, the taxpayers pay that back, but we have to budget to spend it. The clerk fees, miscellaneous income, and then fee and lieu payments, which are, excuse me, a payment for entity that, that is not taxable otherwise, but pays us that payment. Copier fees, planning board fees, our code enforcement and plumbing fees. And then ten percent of the excise tax collections are budgeted into administration, because the staff at the front desk are the ones who collect that money. This is an offset to the cost of staff costs for doing that. And the TIF revenue offset of seventy-five thousand dollars, thirteen thousand of that is identified for the agencies that we talked about tonight, and the remainder is, is an offset to our economic development director's salary and budget. Cable TV revenues are five percent of the amount paid by cable TV subscribers in Bucksport is collected as a fee, a franchise, called a franchise fee, and that is a pass-through to the community, and that is approximately fifty-one thousand. Tax interest, and that's interest on property taxes paid, about twenty-four thousand. And then investment interest, a percentage of our investment interest earned on the money that we have is allocated as an offset to administration. For a total revenue offset of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, leaving a net amount to taxation for general government in all those various categories at one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. Fire and ambulance, as proposed, the fire department budget, six thirty-nine, three twenty, ambulance, one seventy-two, three fifty-six. Per total fire EMS of eight hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Theirs, their offsets are fire protection subsidies by the communities who contract with us for that service, ambulance subsidies from Orland, who contracts with us for that service, and then ambulance user fees, which are the bills people pay, and insurance companies pay for our service. And then, because we're in the second year of the FEMA grant that provided us two people, ninety-three thousand dollars is, is the offset for that for this year, per total offsets of six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. I don't wanna, it's covering up my number. But it is, um, the amount that's left is...
The net? Hundred and sixty-two thousand.
One sixty-two, six seventy-six. And that is the net cost. I wanna, as we go through these, remind you that all of the health insurance costs, and all of the retirement costs for all of the employees of the town are not reflected in the, in the individual budgets. They are reflected in the administration budget. So that one point one million dollar total for everybody who works for the town is in administration. It, it makes the number look bigger. If we move that out into police and fire and public works, not, their budgets would go this way, and administration would go this way. So, just, just as a note, that one sixty-two, six seventy-six is, is the net amount after revenues, but the total cost of all of these departments is not reflected, because insurance and retirement and those things are all budgeted under administration. Paul?
I'm just, I, I think that's a great number, the, the one sixty-two, six seventy-six for the, the fire and ambulance service that we, we get here in the town. If I remember correctly, for, you've had, this is the second year, three years ago, budget, I, I believe, two less firefighters was still a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, right in that range.
It's, it's...
It was, it was over a hundred thousand dollars. So, we, we've added two employees, which, which has added better service to the, to the town and to the citizens, and we've raised it, you know, maybe thirty thousand dollars over the last two years. That's outstanding.
Well, I, I also wanna mention that we've, I get a lot of positive feedback on this service from people who have been, I call them forced users, people who have been in bad situations that have had to... Call, I had a lady in my office earlier this week who told me this, a story of how many times they had to use the ambulance, and why, and how professional, and courteous, and good, and quick our, our people were, which is, I, I always say, the only thing the town has to provide to its residents are the services of the people who work for it. That, that's all we've got. And the better we do with that, the better an expenditure it is of people's money. They feel like they're getting value for that. So when we hear really good things, feedback about this, which we consistently do...
Well, I just heard plenty from our previous mayor. He was pretty happy about it.
Well, many are, but the, the fact of the matter is, this ambulance service serves between eighty, a population of more than eighty-five hundred people, because of the contracts we have, and that's a significantly higher, we do that with six full-time and some part-time people. So it's a, it's a significant amount. It's why you generate the kind of user fees you do, because you're running more than a thousand calls a year.
We expected those to grow when we added the two.
Well, and when we changed the shift and we moved things around, we're working towards the ability to do transports. We're not there yet, but we are...
That was what I was...
Yeah, we are working towards it.
But still, I, I, I thought that that number would gross significantly, in just thinking back over, you know, the last three years, it hasn't.
Well, it's going to, once that grant offset disappears.
We're not even talking about that, though, man. I'm never saying...
So our public safety building, the budget is forty-one thousand, four fifty, and there's no offset to that. That's just, that is, that's what it costs us annually to run the public safety building in terms of heat, like electricity, cleaning, et cetera, et cetera. So, police and dispatch. The total for police and dispatch is seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. The police revenue offset is the money that we get back from RSU twenty-five for providing an SRO for a hundred and eighty days out of the year. And that is a portion of their salary and benefits that are attributed to that piece of the year. Animal fees are the fees we get from contracts with the communities who contract with Bucksport to utilize our animal shelter, and the additional fees that they have to pay if animals are collected or boarded, which is beyond the contract amount. Total offsets are fifty-five thousand dollars, and the net amount, again, for that is six seventy-four, four fifty-one. We can't expect that there will be high offsets to a police agency, that is, other than the fact that we have the SRO reimbursement. That's the big one.
Right.
So highway, the highway budget and the town garage budget total one million, one sixty-four, four seventy-nine. Ninety, excise tax, which was, is a law designed to be used, to generate funds that are used to take care of roads in the community, ninety percent of that, as I said, ten percent I put to administration for the staff that collects all this money. Ninety percent is seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The town also gets a sixty-three thousand dollar highway block grant, used to be called state aid, whatever, it changes its name. But that's sixty-three thousand. Highway fees are driveway entrances and those kind of things. A total offsets of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars, leaving a net amount after that of three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine seventy-nine. The transfer, transfer station expenses are two fifty-nine, six... The transfer station expenses are two fifty-nine, six fifty-nine. Recycling revenue was way down because we only have metal that's going now because all of our other recycling we're shipping off. Solid waste fees are the demolition debris and those kind of things. MRC rebates, the town receives five dollar rebate for every ton of trash that it sends to the fiber right plant to take the, per ton tipping fee from seventy dollars a ton to sixty-five dollars a ton. That was part of the agreement, and on our twelve hundred tons a year, that's approximately six hundred, six thousand dollars. So total revenue offsets are twenty-two thousand, leaving a net amount to be raised after revenues of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, six fifty-nine. And while that may sound like a significant figure, the town does an exceptional job managing its waste in that our fees are low, we have much less incidence of things being thrown in the wrong place as a result of the fact that we make it easier for people to do this. So while it may sound like a big number, in comparison to many other communities where we're doing, and it's a lot smaller than it used to be for us, so we're doing okay with that.
Did you say that the recycling revenue, the thousand dollars was for metal?
Metal primarily. We don't, there's nothing else that we're, our zero sort costs us a hundred and forty dollars a ton.
Okay.
We're not, the current, the collapse of the foreign market for recyclables has impacted, it's done things that haven't been done in years, which is causing the federal government to talk about recyclables. What had happened over time was that it was so much cheaper to just ship it someplace else who used what they wanted and then they disposed of it. We had things being shipped that were thirty and forty percent contaminated, meaning unusable, so they just went in some landfill in some other country, and it stifled innovation because there was no incentive in this country for new ways to do it because it was so cheap to send it someplace else, and that's all gone now. But that's kind of a stay tuned thing. The state has all these bills that they're looking at right now in terms of recycling and product stewardship and things that the state hasn't looked at in a long time. Recreation, our recreation budget proposal is two twenty-one, nine sixty-eight. The town dock walkway, Main Street, proposed as forty-seven thousand, one nineteen, for total amount of two sixty-nine, oh eighty-seven. Revenue offsets docking in mooring fees, that's the cruise ship that ties up down there, that's what we realized from that last year from having them here as often as we did. The SPOFID fund should not be in this line item, it's over in the other one, but the diversion grant in RSU twenty-five, as we discussed during the budget, the former assistant recreation person, when we converted to the Y, we committed not to lose anyone, and so what we did was we contracted that employee to the RSU and where she serves as a social worker. And she also serves as the diversion grant coordinator for Bucksport, so the net return for her services that we get from those two entities is fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. And it's, the total revenue is seventy minus the forty-five hundred, that's in the next one, but, which leaves net to be raised for recreation after taxation a little over two-hundred thousand dollars. This we can ignore because we just, this was before the discussion this evening, this is where we ended up in terms of...
Can we revisit them?
Please. Guys, hold on a second. Okay, capital improvements, the amount that we are budgeting to put into capital reserves this month, this is not what we're budgeting to take out of them, this is what we're budgeting to put into them. Forty thousand in fire equipment, twenty-five thousand in public safety building, a hundred and twenty thousand in highway equipment, thirty-five thousand in ambulance reserve, thirty-seven in police reserve, ten thousand in information technology, thirty thousand in highway improvements, thirty-five thousand in the waterfront for a total reserve appropriation of three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. General assistance is an eight thousand dollar budget, but the state reimburses the town seventy percent of anything we spend. If we spent all eight thousand, we'd get fifty-six hundred back, so the amount to be raised from taxation would be twenty-four hundred dollars. The rules in this program are so stringent that qualifying is extremely difficult and we don't generally spend more than fifty-six hundred in a year, which means we'd get that much less, but it's, the rules are tough for the program. Utilities, streetlights and hydrant rental, that total is two fifty-four, nine thirty-two, and there's no offset. The streetlight is the same as last year, hydrant rental is up that additional three percent that the water district added on that fee. It wasn't a rate increase, but it's the fee that they can get to between zero and fifteen percent, and this takes them to eleven and some percent, but it's an additional three percent. The school budget, I had used the number before, this is actually going to be a little smaller, I think, and we're using a hundred thousand dollars from that, bringing their amount to be raised from them, about four million, six ninety-one, nine ten. So the bottom line is municipal total budget, six million, seven eighty-five, revenue offsets of three million, two thirty-three, four twenty-five, leaving a net to be raised by taxation of two million, seven sixty-seven, three sixty, plus the county tax of one ninety-eight, three nineteen, the school budget minus their revenue offset, an overlay estimated of eighty-three thousand dollars. It's a percentage of the tax commitment between zero and five, and leaving the total to be raised of seven million, five forty-two, two seventy.
So what's the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's the ta-da moment. This is where we end up now, recognizing that these numbers change because you took sixty thousand dollars out of community agencies tonight. That, these numbers will look...
That was a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Hmm?
That was based on a hundred and forty-eight.
It was based on that. That will come out.
Quick question.
Yes.
Those budget numbers for all the budgets were the same numbers that were presented during the Budget Means April, and we had talked about looking at reducing some of those.
And the ones that had the line items, like I did to administration when you looked at that budget, that those had been, this is what you looked at, the budget you see, what you have in front of you, those, all those line items that come next will include those requests that you had. This is everything...
This is what we worked on.
This is what you worked on, all of those other items that you've talked about.
And what will the mill rate be? Are you projecting?
Next meeting.
Eighteen point five? No, a joke. That was a joke.
Joe, any questions?
So at the next meeting, what you'll be doing is establishing what goes out for public hearing because it needs to be advertised for the second council meeting in June. So you'll have the Excel sheets with all the little things showing where you end up at the bottom. This is, this is the presentation so that people can understand what it costs us to do what we do.
Well, I think that's an excellent presentation.
I thought it was great, sir.
What's the, what's our approximate amount in undedicated reserves?
Right this minute?
Okay.
Today? Well, no, as of the last audit, minus what we appropriated, without considering what we're going to end up with this at the end of this year, it's six point two million dollars. Because it was a little over six point six, we used a little over four, and we're going to have money left in this year's budget that's going to go back. It's going to stay in that same proportion.
Well, as a result, you're a good man and you have a good sense as counsel, I think the public is well-served in this court. Keep the tax rates so low and to have the services that we have, we have a full-service community, we actually, we should pat ourselves on the back. We'll see if people will again get re-elected.
Well, the thing to remember is that this is actually a hard year. This is a hard year because we're still working with no increased value at the mill site, as a matter of fact, a ten million dollar loss.
Right.
And the ability to compensate for that, you should be proud of yourselves, the ability to compensate for that and not suck all the money out of your fund balance to do it is...
What's the rate of return we're getting on that, Sue? What's the rate of return we're getting on it?
It varies between point seven five, which is one of the, which is about, and from back in the days of not getting anything, up to three percent, which is the best score.
How are our first things doing?
They've done well and poorly. I mean, they've done well consistently, but when the stock market was tanking, it, but we, we maintain a to-date balance in our system by posting those gains and losses monthly, we're required to as part of our audit, so that at the end of the year we see where it's actually all gone, but there were several months there when the, that stock market was, poor Rocky came to, Roxanne came to me and said to me, I said, it's okay, they're gonna, they're going this way now, so we're okay, but they're very conservative investments. They're, you know, we were doing eight percent, in the worst time, we averaged back a little over four. So it's still a percent more than I can earn with our, because we don't invest anything in our, from our fund balance piece in anything that's not a guaranteed, no loss of principal.
Right.
That is...
That money's safe.
That's not, well, it's not at risk. There, in the things that you put into equities, that small percentage, there is a risk to principal from that activity, but there's not to the big, the big bottom money has...
Anything else from the council? Anything from the public on budget?
I just want to mention one story that, I know we've got, we're going to be here all night, right? So...
Your story, Mayor, go ahead.
Just a quick anecdote, my, a friend of mine's son moved back from Orlando, was a game designer, you know, working with a guy out of San Francisco, so he had to have high-speed, I mean, top internet, moved back to, wanted to move back to the Ellsworth area, but had to go to Matias. He's getting higher speed internet than he was in Orlando, Florida, to do this game design stuff. And I wondered, you know, why, where are we on that? And maybe we can talk about it at some point in the future, but I wanted to plant that seed again, that, you know, that's the way to move us forward. You could get people from anywhere living here, working remotely, if we could get that kind of, and I know we started down that road and I don't know where we are now.
Yeah, still going down.
We're still working on it, okay, I just want to keep it visible. Rich is keeping it visible.
What we're talking about is we have the interstate that goes through Bucksport via the three-ring binder, we just have no off-ramps, and creating the off-ramps, what we've been discussing is what's the best way to create the off-ramps and who should they be available to in order to provide the kind of high-speed that you're talking about? Did I get that right, Rich?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That's good. You get the highway guy right here, he can create it up.
All right, item sixteen. Oh, it was in favor, sorry, Beer. Oh, wasn't you?